No, I can't. I'm not trying to do anything, just not trying to do anything else.
Excellent.
This is.
Boss is in.
So good to see the boss.
Look alive. How are you?
Grand. We have an agenda.
I know, we're gonna.
Glaurious.
Internalize all our questions.
Internalize them.
I want you to move along. Less talking, the better.
Yeah. Feel free to chime in. Yeah, I saw him on his way out to the restroom.
So we're in the working session first?
Yeah. We're on TV for the work session? Oh. Oopsie. We've never had, we've never had a TV work session, but I don't think it's a bad idea.
No, it's alright. Okay.
Good job.
I'll wait another minute for Chris. Alright, so this will bring this, um, meeting, open up the work session to precede the regular schedule of meeting. Um, so our work session is for the next forty-five minutes to go over the CEIOD. I don't really have a structure of how we should do this. I don't know if people have suggestions?
I sent out several suggestions.
I'm sorry?
I sent out several suggestions.
I saw your edits, yeah.
I think the, um, I think the primary purpose per the master plan matrix recommendation
Mm-hmm.
was for the board to review the, whether the overlay still meets the purpose and intent. That was the primary purpose of the work session.
So, I mean, I guess one way to assess whether it's still meeting that purpose is, has it been succeeding in generating redevelopment in the targeted areas? It seems that redevelopment was kind of the byword, would people agree that?
Uh-huh.
So, I don't know, do we, I wasn't around for much of the time on the planning board since it was put into place. I was on town meeting when it was, um, approved as a, as a district.
Is there any way of, Evan, is there any way of sorting the projects for the past, is, is there any tracking that we have that, that have come under the CEIOD, uh, projects, are there like, have there been five of them over the past five years? Or they're like ten, I mean?
Uh, probably maybe, maybe a dozen.
Yeah, about a dozen.
And all of them have used the CEIOD, not the underlying zoning?
Uh, the dozen that I'm referring to, assuming it's a dozen, um, yeah, they, they came in, they chose to come in under the CEIOD.
Okay.
And then, as you know, more recently, uh, projects are choosing not to use the CEIOD. You know, to refresh people's memory, um, two forty Littleton Road was a CEIOD project, twenty units rental. Pretty sure it's two forty.
Is Acton Road?
Acton came in under the Center Village Overlay District.
Center Village, okay, so that's not CEIOD. Did Press Cafe come in on that?
Press Cafe came in under.
Under CEIOD?
It used CEIOD, but it came in primarily through the one twenty-nine business amenity overlay. As did, um, one oh four Turnpike, came in under the one twenty-nine Bayard, but used the CEIOD for dimensional and
Yep.
permitting, um, procedures and protocols.
What about the development on, uh, Turnpike, the, uh, the smaller homes in that one lot?
Came in under, uh, one twenty-nine overlay as well.
One twenty-nine, not CEIOD.
So what were the twelve that you would say?
I don't know if there were twelve, I'm just trying to, uh, think of them off the top of my head.
I mean, I think that, it looks like probably the photographed ones on the cover.
No, those are just examples. Those were, those were examples that were, uh, used as part of the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
One thirty-three Princeton Street, I think, came in under CEIOD.
Okay.
Um, so we've had, we've had, we've had a couple that were residential, we've had a couple that were, you know, commercial industrial in nature.
Is that the Glenview, one thirty-three Princeton?
No, uh, the Glenview came in under, um, CEIOD.
What's one thirty-three?
Uh, the old cannery.
Oh.
The board approved it for a, uh, liquor store.
What was the first one you mentioned, two forty?
I believe it's two forty Littleton Road.
Littleton, okay.
Uh, two fifty Apollo, probably the most recent one, used CEIOD. So there's a gamut of different types of projects, different scope and scales, different situations, some were, you know, redevelopment, some were putting in, putting on additions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but they all used it primarily for its, you know, dimensional flexibility. If you recall, it, it has, it has some buy right, um, it takes the underlying zoning dimensional requirements and it, um, it, it tears it into two tiers, a buy right increase over the underlying and then a special permit increase.
Ten percent, buy rights, ten percent.
Yeah, yeah. It's a board, you know, applicants have used it for a variety of purposes. And, you know, the board has also used it, um, you know, as part of their negotiation strategy. Cause many of those, uh, CEIOD projects trigger some sort of special permit, either within CEIOD or a major business complex or, or something else.
But if you look at the purpose and intent, it doesn't feel like it's, feels like a lot more advantages have come out of one, the one twenty-nine overlay and value out of that than this one.
I think it's primarily just where the projects are located, one twenty-nine, I think, had more opportunity. There's more value, just more, more opportunity there. But if you didn't have CEIOD, you wouldn't have two forty Littleton Road.
But even, even the one twenty-nine overlay has not really been a hundred percent successful with attracting a lot of projects, right?
There's a variety of challenges that, that in my opinion are systematic and fundamental.
Okay.
And, you know, incrementally, we've had conversations over the years. You know, in my opinion, the overlays serve a critical strategic need in the sense that, uh, without them, the invitation to invest in town is little to none, based upon the underlying zoning. So at least the overlays provide the market, the investor, the property owner, uh, to think outside the box. So it, so it provides the planning board an opportunity to engage with an investor and have that conversation. Without the, without the overlays, there may be, there may be investors out there who wouldn't even be able to consider Chelmsford.
Okay.
So I, I think, you know, looking, looking back to where we are, uh, that, to me, that's the primary benefit of the overlays.
But I mean, the, the obsolete and underutilized first generation buildings, that we're trying to, I mean, it seems to me that, that's one of the main things, we're trying to spur investment and redevelopment of those.
Glenview was an example, the old, uh, Prince, the old cannery was an example.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, some could argue portions of one twenty-nine currently are. You know, all of Tinsborough Road, Middlesex Street, I mean, they're all zone commercial. And, you know, you can, you can cherry, you know, cherry pick individual sites uh, that are first generation and they're just outdated, they lack, they lack any landscaping or modernized lighting or, um, lack of stormwater.
Right.
So all of those things usually do get captured as part of, as part of a CEIOD project, as part of a redevelopment.
So working with, with the overlay for many years, Evan, is there any particular item that you suggest modification should be made?
Yeah, I think the high level conversation, in my mind, is, as I understand it, the last handful of years, uh, I think the overlays have been questioned. You know, that started with, uh, what was presented at town meeting, wasn't exactly, you know, what we got. Uh, and then it evolved to, well, the projects we're getting aren't exactly what we thought, maybe scope, maybe scale. And so I, you know, I think the town's reached a point where you have developers who engage and they are likely beginning to shy away from the overlays, particularly CEIOD. And that's likely based upon the notion that, um, the CEIOD gives the planning board more authority than the underlying regulations. Particularly with architecture and things of that nature. And while the board hasn't really used CEIOD, um, you know, you know, in a primary, um, function to increase architecture, I think there is a stigma with, with the overlays at this point from the developers' or applicant's perspective. But then you're also left with the community and the board. So if moving forward, the examples that we've talked about, if the community or the board is not inclined to view those projects favorably, then what's the point of the overlay? So I struggle with trying to guide applicants as to, you know, the original benefit of the CEIOD and what the spirited intent was, and I think we've moved pretty far away from that, from a regulatory perspective. And then, and then you layer on, you know, community sentiment and then board sentiment. There's no harm in leaving the overlays there. But if there's no interest to use the overlays, uh, within the original strategic intent, which was to facilitate and incentivize, um, good planning and good projects, and it's gonna be viewed as, as, as just a regulatory scheme similar to the underlying zoning, then it has no value. And, and applicants won't use it, cause they won't see any benefit.
Well, I mean, how could we improve it? I mean, if you look at the case studies that you presented at town meeting, I mean, they're definitely preferable to the, uh, undesirable. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at that, it was on the.
Yeah, I saw them.
Well, it was on the.
But Evan, you were just mentioning.
Links on the agenda, I mean.
You were just mentioning that if we don't have the zoning, the underlying, the underlying zone, the bylaws, developers would not tend to come to Chelmsford. But at the same time, you just said.
They'd be forced to use the underlying zoning.
Right, but you're saying they would, they would shy away from that.
The underlying zoning is broken, it doesn't work.
Okay.
In my opinion, and that's why, that's why the, the CEIOD, um, provided a regulatory option whereby the board and the applicant wasn't, um, wasn't bound by the rigidity of the underlying zoning. So there's, there's tremendous benefit in, to a, a flexible zoning scheme, is that you can negotiate, it's not a one size fits all. And I think the board has used that flexibility to improve the proposed project from when it was originally appro, uh, proposed, to what the board ultimately approves. It could be dimensional flexibility, it could be, um, landscape flexibility, parking flexibility. The underlying zoning just doesn't, doesn't offer that, everything's by special permit.
I don't know if you can say this, but has there been any CEIOD approved project that's in the town that is a failure? That, is there, is there something that is very unpopular that was built? That, uh, besides probably Turnpike Road, the, that wasn't under CEIOD, right, the apartments?
It, it came in under a Bayard, but the flexibility was, was based upon CEIOD.
Okay.
So, so, you know, I think, um, I think when it comes to residential projects,
Yeah.
CEIOD does not regulate units per acre. So whether it was one fifty-two Turnpike, one oh four Turnpike, or two forty, uh, Littleton Road, it doesn't regulate units per acre, and as we all know, that, that appears to be, uh, the primary concern and consideration. What it regulates is FAR.
Yeah.
And so it was trying to create a, a, an equalized, um, an equalized system for underlying commercially zoned property and trying to incentivize them to build residential. And over the years, two forty Littleton Road is a good example. It was originally permitted via underlying zoning for a fast food drive-through. The neighborhood didn't like it, the board didn't really want it. And when the CEIOD multifamily project came through, the board thought that was a much better solution for the neighborhood. Uh, so, so that's an example of, of, you know, of the benefits of CEIOD. Otherwise, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have had that opportunity. Like I said, I think it's worthwhile keeping it on the books, I don't think the bylaws in and of themselves, um, have any fatal flaws. What I think it comes down to is, is to, you know, to what extent and degree the particular planning board that's reviewing the projects is embracing the, the strategic flexibility that it provides. The, the other projects that I think were more controversial were in the center. Grismill one, Grismill two, nine Acton Road. Those did not rely on CEIOD for any regulatory, uh, dimensional, uh, aspects. Those relied entirely on the Village Center Overlay District. That one, and we're not reviewing that one tonight, uh, but I think that one has probably run its course. In the sense that, uh, you know, people didn't necessarily like Grismill one, Grismill two was denied. And nine Acton was probably viewed as something better than a central corridor elevator building.
Yeah, but I don't think that necessarily the, the, um, it was the overlay that killed those projects. It was, in my opinion, it was developers being a little bit greedy and they took it over the line. Like Grismill two was a height issue. And otherwise, that would have gone through.
Yeah, so.
But they refused to work with the board.
I just thought, within each, within all of those overlays and they all procedurally tie back to the CEIOD?
Yep.
If the board embraces the, the, the CEIOD permitting process, and, and all of these overlays are designed to generate proposals. And within that proposal, and I think, I think the board likely learned that lesson, unfortunately, it's, it's a game, for a lack of a better word. Forty Bs handle the same way, they come in with a hundred and twenty, but they know they can survive with a hundred.
Right.
But, but that, but in order for that regulatory process to work, the, the board needs to embrace that and be very, be more directive. Like, the overlay, we want multifamily via the overlay. And this is the kind of multifamily we want, this is the kind of project we want, that's the only reason to adopt overlays. If the town is not interested in providing zoning incentives, then there's no, there's no purpose to have overlays.
Well, I mean, I personally think, at least with the Center Village one, and maybe it's just my personal preference, that I feel like one of the problems with the implementation and utilization of the overlay was that it was too flexible, like, I don't think it should have been allowed to have a f, whatever it is, forty foot setback and get rid of the first floor small business or retail component. I think if they had tried to build Grismill two with a retail first floor, I might have had a different opinion about it. And I feel the whole, the whole Center Village District, if you did retail on the first floor and multifamily on the second floor, I personally would much prefer that.
Yeah, so like I said, that project is, I, I don't, I guess it's good to blend the two. But that project, the forty foot, um, frontage zone provision, it is not part of CEIOD, it's part of the Village Center Overlay District. I think one of the other recommendations of the master plan implementation was to review the other overlays. I recommend it starting with CEIOD, because CEIOD.
It's kind of a big umbrella.
Covers m, most of the town outside of the Center Village. And it also, uh, prescribes the procedures and protocols to be used, uh, for the other overlays.
But I agree with you, I think it's, if, if these haven't been successful, I think it's because the developer's been greedy and hasn't been as flexible, because I think we're all reasonable. And there are other towns that this has been successful with and they've gotten what they've wanted, but I don't necessarily think there's anything wrong with the CEIOD process or, you know, these, like, you know, what's on these slides, these pictures. But I do think developers are gonna do what they need to do to make as high of a profit as they can. And if they know that they can get certain things passed, then that's what they're gonna propose.
Yeah, that's very true.
Evan, on the projects that used both the one twenty-nine and CEIOD overlays, how would those projects have been different had they just gone under the one twenty-nine?
So the one twenty-nine, um, overlay allowed amenities.
Yep.
And those, one of those amenities included multifamily. And the multifamily was only permitted, uh, in the perimeter zone.
Okay.
But be, beyond one twenty-nine allowing the multifamily, it relied entirely on the CEIOD for everything else.
Okay.
Dimensional requirements, parking, landscaping, uh, approval criteria, as well as procedures and protocols.
So if we didn't have this overlay, they would have had to rely on the underlying zoning?
The one twenty-nine overlay would have been written differently.
Okay.
And the underlying zoning, the, the best way I can describe it is when Skip's redevelopment was ongoing. We didn't have any of these overlays. And that project, similar to many other projects, triggered eight to ten special permits. The special permits ranged from, um, perimeter, interior, parking, landscaping, parking ratio, building setbacks, a variety of special permits. And the more special permits that a project requires, the more legal exposure there is. And I think we all know on this, at, at the table, that, uh, just as though, just as developers are clever and, and strategic, boards can be clever and strategic. And so at that particular time, the, certain board members would be inclined to approve eight out of the nine special permits. Well, if you don't get the, if you don't get all the special permits, you don't necessarily have a project. So that's, that's what spurred through the master plan process, the notion of needing to create, um, customized zoning that would eliminate that scenario.
Okay.
So the evolution of, of, of CEIOD, you know, it basically captured, you know, the, the development that was going on in the town from probably, uh, two thousand or two thousand eight. And the board isn't, the board wasn't much different than it is now. The projects certainly weren't, weren't any different, Skip's, the Skip's redevelopment at the time was fairly controversial. But hindsight, I think, leads many to believe that it, it fits in, it functions, you know, just fine.
So it feels like back then, things were too strict, so the overlays were developed to try and loosen things up. But it almost feels like the pushback against the overlays and some of the feedback is that now it's a little bit too flexible. So maybe the answer is not getting rid of any of the overlays, but adjusting them to bring it a little bit more towards the middle and a little bit more restrictive.
You can do that. I think, I think the, you certainly can do that. But I think it's gonna, I think it always has come down to how the board administers their regulatory process. And, uh, the CEIOD and then the presentations and the follow-up kind of discussions that I've had with the board over the years was that it truly requires the board, uh, to be a, to, to wanna be in a collaborative process. That's why there's a, there's an applicability process. If you recall, three meeting houses and the other CEIODs had that, that conceptual applicability. And the reason for that was for, uh, the board to be able to give an applicant a quick, um, indication as to whether they were conceptually on board. That, if the board embraces that process and really buys into it, it has tremendous value. Because it allows the board to say, well, you know, we don't really like this particular element of your project, but if you came down to a, you know, if you reduce one story, or did this change, we're conceptually on board. I will say, I think that that, that, that ability to be empowered, I think, is difficult for some board members, particularly elected board members, to, to deal with. I think it's uncomfortable for some people. And so, you know, zoning, zoning and elected planning boards are innately political entities. And zoning, special permits and public hearings are also political forums. But at that time, you need to, you need to recall, the master plan was very, very strong. It was one of the first master plans that was basically written from scratch. It was very prescriptive, the town and the people involved understood that, that the town had some aging commercial districts. And that the, the zoning at the time didn't contemplate any mixed use, it didn't contemplate reduced parking, it didn't contemplate any of those zoning and planning themes at the time. And that was what CEIOD, uh, you know, that was the purpose, the void that it filled. And then since then, iterations of, of different boards have different, um, interests or commitments or, you know, vested interest in it. But the zoning itself provides the town, particularly the board, with all the tools that it, that it would ever need or want.
Well, if we wanted to bring it back a bit, as Chris suggested, or just think about how we could improve it and make it a more useful tool in today's environment, does anyone have any ideas about what that would look like?
As a general statement, I don't think we have much of a problem with the CEIOD.
Okay.
I think we have a far bigger problem with our own decision-making process. And, uh, even the CEIOD applicability hearings that we do from time to time, which should just be, yeah, this is basically okay, and we're not ruling on any details. But even there, we've had ourselves go two, three meetings. Basically digging into the applicability as if it were, in fact, uh, almost a grant of the imagined special permits that were underneath it. I think we can change the way we handle these things. I think we can change the way we handle these things, probably by
And that means, though, also sometimes saying no to a project for applicability.
It may very well.
Right, which I think this board has had difficulty doing in the past. But I think we need to be upfront and honest.
That's tremendous value.
I don't disagree with you that we should, you know, maybe just, like, not make it go two or three meetings, but I do think that the board has to also be comfortable with saying no. And people on the board need to be comfortable saying no.
Yeah, but we have to recognize that it is perfectly acceptable to have a project under our nose and say, yes, it's applicable, no, we don't approve the project.
Or it could be applicable if these were done.
Well, that's what we hope to do.
Yeah.
Is say, that's what the applicability is for, to say, well, you know, we got some doubts here, it's applicable, but you're likely to run into trouble down the road if you go with this element, or this element, or this element.
We have done that, though.
And we have done some of that.
Yeah.
And it has worked.
But I mean, the last time we reviewed applicability, we had people, I mean, the project was definitely, it was brought under SEOD, if I'm not mistaken, and it was definitely applicable to the SEOD. And we had a number of people saying no. I mean, what you could have been said, which I think would have been more appropriate, was, it's applicable, but I don't like it for X or Y or Z reasons. But to say it's not applicable is, I don't really understand that. That, that didn't seem like a appropriate process to me.
Yeah, I, I think you're saying what I was trying to say.
I think back to Chris's point, what you may wanna do, just a couple ideas as we're sitting here. If you're looking to revisit the strategic intent, I think that's a reasonable and valid and probably valuable, beneficial exercise to go through. And then I think that would require the board, working with the community, to figure out where in town do you truly want to incentivize investment?
Mm-hmm.
And what kind of investment? You know, your other, your other opportunity may be, as Chris was alluding to, to begin to introduce some ceilings. And if, if, if units per acre is a sensitivity, then we can, you know, consider introducing units per acre.
And Joel provided a few examples, too, that we could add in.
Yeah, well, those are, those are more, Joel's are very specific, related to regulatory jurisdiction. I think the question for the overlays is, is much more simplistic than that. Like, what is, what is, what is the strategic purpose of them?
What are we driving at?
Right. And I think we have, you know, a handful of projects that we can look back on. And so, you know, 240 Littleton, everyone may agree that residential was the best long-term solution, but not a twenty units an acre. Again, the twenty units an acre is based upon, you know, the underlying FAR could have accommodated 20,000 square feet of commercial. So, we can, you know, we can revisit some of those strategies. And then, you know, ultimately, you know, there may be an argument to be made that the overlay shouldn't include any multifamily, or, or, or less incentive, less incentivization towards multifamily.
Or only multi, like, only a project that's only multifamily and doesn't have the mix of commercial in it?
Doesn't have what in it?
The mix of the commercial.
That's for the, the Village Center.
That's the Village Center.
Outside the Village Center, like 104 Turnpike, 240 Littleton Road, hundred percent residential. So, I mean, I think the town's in a different place than we were a decade ago. You know, we were, we were chasing 40B, the town had the master plan and affordable housing plan, was committed to building more housing, the neighborhoods, whenever they had a choice, always preferred multifamily over commercial. I think that's still the case. But as we've discussed, we have a lot of areas that have zoning conflicts. And while you can attempt to go into the zoning map and try to fix it, the overlay also provides a very strong tool to solve those problems for you. So, again, 240 Littleton was zoned commercial, the neighborhood clearly didn't want commercial. So, the overlay at least provided a, a solution to approve residential. And then you can get into, well, what kind of residential? Maybe, you know, to a neatest point, you want to incentivize single-family and not multifamily. So, there's a variety of ways to work, you know, make the zoning work to achieve the goals and objectives you're trying to. I, I think at this point, it's just not clear to me, and likely others, what are the, the board's planning and zoning strategies? What does the town need, what does the town want? And that, while that's a big question, it, it may be a pretty simple answer. We're built out. There isn't much more, other than redevelopment. And with a limit, limitation on store capacity and sensitivity to school, to school enrollment, there may not be a need, a political need or want to incentivize multifamily housing.
Well, that
And that's fine.
That kinda goes to the first guiding principle that I noticed on this, is prioritize redevelopment over new development. It's unlikely we're gonna get new development in most places anyway, because everything's built out.
Correct, correct. But what, the reason that that's mentioned is that the underlying zoning was designed for new development. The underlying zoning didn't work very nicely for redevelopment. So, the, the, the SEOD was strategically crafted to work very well for redevelopment, because, due to its flexibility.
The only question I have about, in what you were saying, is that, that you felt the board should be sort of determining or figuring out what we think the town's interests are, and fashion say ought to be able to meet the town's interests. But, and we're doing this because we're, we're to be providing input back to the master plan committee. But it seems to me that that is the kind of thing that comes from the master plan committee, to identify what the town's needs and wants are, and then we figure out how we implement it in our sayon.
And it did.
Mm-hmm. So, this discussion is
Well, this
What?
This discussion, in my estimation, is that I think the, there are, the planning board may or, may, may not be aligned with the recommendations in the master plan.
Yeah.
The master plan
I mean, the, I mean, the master plan is currently in work. I don't really
No, it's complete.
It is.
You are adopting
Okay, great.
The implementation.
Trying to adopt, they're trying to
Implement it.
Implement it. That master plan
This is one of them.
That master plan did not change course.
So, are they recommending, Mike, are they recommending
They recommended continued, continued implementation of SEOD.
Yep, correct.
Okay.
As it is, or?
Yeah, well, then they had the recommendation that the board should go in and review it.
And, yeah, look at, look at the
So, like Joel's exercise is part of that technical review.
Which was good.
I suggest, I suggested a, a, kind of a larger view of this. There's no point in doing Joel's exercise if the board isn't buying into the strategic purpose and intent of the overlay.
But I think most of us have, at least partially voiced, some support for the intent. But I think it's how it was carried out in some of the details that some of us have an issue with. Like, it's too flexible, as opposed to being just right. So, I think maybe if we look at some of those things, we might be able to bring it to a happy medium.
But if we're not getting development using it now, it's not flexible enough.
Yeah.
So, I think we, we've gotta allow flexibility, but make it
Well, you, that's assuming that this is the reason why we're not getting the development. Could be other reasons.
There are a lot of reasons we're not getting development. Only some of them have to do with our zoning.
The, the, the development that's been in front of the board recently, 270 and 93 Brick Hill this evening, both didn't specifically chose not to use the SEOD. Maybe they didn't need to, but, well, there's benefits, you know, there's always benefits to use the SEOD. I think there is, I think there's board business as to how the board goes about its regulatory process and administering the zoning is bleeding into, or has a, has a, an influential effect as to how developers and investors are viewing the regulatory scheme within, within the zoning and how, particularly how the board is using those. That's my interest, that's my primary interest, is trying to figure out, you know, are we, are we committed to the overlays, meaning for the next five to 10 years? Or are we changing course? Once we figure out that, you know, we decide we're not changing course, but we're going in and refining, well, that's, you know, that's, that's something entirely different. But right now, it's difficult for me to give guidance. I don't think a lot of developers or investors have a good sense as to if they went through the SEOD process, even going through applicability, whether they have any really clear indication as to whether it's a predictable process. So, that's, to me, that's the friction. When you, when you read SEOD and you look at the PowerPoint presentation that was given to town meeting, and you read the master plan at the time, you understand the context, we're very far away from where, where we started. And I think that warrants a, a, you know, a real review to the, to the commitment or the, you know, the investment into the, into the overlay. Trying to make it, refine it, or make it perfect, that's gonna be really tough for commercial industrial, particularly for redevelopment sites, because they all have different challenges. But there's always, you know, there's always opportunity for refinement. But the more refining you do, the more restrictive it becomes. Which, again, leads me back to the notion that I, I think it just boils down to board members are not comfortable with, you know, the, the, the flexibility. But if you, if you could, if we can find a way where we're able to embrace the flexibility within that process, and, and don't, not to view it as us against them, but we truly are looking for investment in certain places for certain ki- for certain types of development.
Right.
It's a very powerful tool. You know, my gut tells me that it's the multifamily that, that was, or that is the, creating the conflict. And most of the projects in, in the overlays have been multifamily. Moving forward, I think that's kind of resolving itself, just due to the wastewater limitation and likely the public sentiment. But if we could clarify that, and then we were able to internally and externally send strong messages after the overlays are revised, and let's assume they focus entirely on commercial industrial, that, that sends a very strong message, which has value. And we can create caps, no different than, than, you know, the warehouse distribution. We have to figure out what are the community values, what are, what are the thresholds? I think the clearer we can create those thresholds, then there's less kind of unknowns within the overlays. And maybe that's what you're speaking to, which, which I think is reasonable. It's clear to me, yes, there are certain uses in 129 that the community doesn't wanna see certain sizes. That's fine, let's, you know, let's go into the overlay and, but then, you know, where there are uses that the community wants, maybe there are certain-sized buildings that are more appropriate.
Do you just create two overlays? One for its commercial industrial-oriented and one that's multifamily-oriented?
We could, we could do that.
I don't think it's a problem.
I think the multi, in my, in my opinion
Sounds like Evan is saying
I think the multifamily is a distraction at this point.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of the market, not the market, but the, the infrastructure and primarily the wastewater is a, is a, for any sizable multifamily, is a, is a major uneconomic condition.
Well, is it though? I mean, all, there's not that large projects in other towns that they build a wastewater plant to go with.
Yeah, but as, as Chris and Joel will, will be able to update you, the notion of building wastewater treatment plants in a zone two, which is most of the town, is, is unlikely. So, again, there's a variety of factors. And even if, even if we didn't have a wastewater issue, any of those large multifamily require a special permit. I'm not sure that there is a, a board, I'm not sure that the board's inclined, and it's pretty clear to me the community is not interested in seeing more multifamily, which is, again, which is fine. But I think that's a discussion that the board needs to have, and if we, if we have a, a clear consensus, I would encourage the board to go into the zoning bylaw and revise it to make it clear. We, we do continue to get calls. We get calls for all kinds of things.
Well, one of my frustrations is, has always been, since I've been involved with this board, is I feel like we're just sitting here waiting for things to come to us, instead of, you know, we don't, we don't buy land, we don't do development, so I think if we could, kind of correlating with what we're doing for the MBTA, I mean, if we could identify, we do need housing. What kind of housing do we want?
But again, there has to be a commitment to it, because if you zone it, they, they will come. And that's exactly, you know, what has happened. So, you know, I think the last 10 years of development, when you compare it to the strategic plans, was spot on. It got exactly what we asked for. It's clear that it's kind of run its course now, particularly with multifamily. Setting aside multifamily, well, then you're left with, you know, what's the future of 129? What's the future of the shopping areas at Drum Hill and Chelmsford Street, things we've talked about? I think the board, through the master plan and the board, you need to look at, well, you know, what's the future of that 10 years from now, with big box retail and e-commerce and, and those types of issues? The current zoning allows for a lot of those opportunities. But it's clear to me that I don't think the community or the board is, is prepared to, you know, re-envision, reimagine its commercial districts over the next 10, 15 years. I, I think the community is very focused on maintaining its, its aesthetic, its current aesthetics, and they view that as preserving. But the board, you're seeing incrementally, Three Meeting House, you're seeing those types of projects where local, local property owners are beginning to reimagine their, their, their assets. So, like I said, the, the overlays right now, basically, are a one-size-fits-all in the sense that they, they, they speak to anybody and everybody. It's an open, it's basically an open-door policy. We welcome your proposals. I'm just not sure the board or the community is comfortable with that. And if we're not, if the, if the, if we don't have a level of consensus, it's difficult, staff or developers, to be able to engage in a productive manner. Because the, the rules of engagement just aren't, aren't clear at that point.
Well, I mean, I, I agree, I mean, I don't, I guess I don't agree. I mean, I feel like the guiding principles, I would be surprised if anyone on this, at this table, isn't committed to, you know, prioritizing redevelopment, incentivizing redevelopment to make it feasible, and, um, I guess, provide incentive-based zoning to achieve desired land use. Maybe what is the desired land use is the crux of the problem.
I like Joel's idea of maybe you separate. If they're going down housing, they go down this one route. If they go into commercial with housing, it's maybe another route.
Yeah, whether they're packaged
And it has different criterias.
Yeah, we certainly could do that, whether it's packaged within the same overlay or two separate overlays is just a matter of wordsmithing.
Just modifying it a little bit.
But I think the key is commercial with, with residential. Like, I like, I still love your idea about the Chelmsford Mall, like, and I think that's a great, something to look at for even Drum Hill. Right, like, that's
Palmont Plaza.
And the laundromat, right, like, that's, you know
Just didn't work in one of those buildings, it's great.
No, the one on, the one on 110, like, if that had nice condos upstairs, I think that would be fine.
That's something we need to incentivize.
But that's something incentivized, so would, like, would that be commercial, would that be residential, like?
Mixed use.
Right, so
Because SEOD allows that now.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, I think it's in
But maybe it's the, like you said, maybe you hit it early on, maybe it's the number of units per acre.
That's what I think it is.
Where if it's downtown, it's a little bit more, could be dense, and if it's outside
The SEOD has a tiered approach, it has a byright project types and a special permit project type. So, anything, and it incentivized conversion of existing commercial space into residential. If you do that in your eight units or less, it's, it's byright. You'll see that with, with Three Meeting House.
Mm-hmm.
That could be applicable all along Chelmsford Street, between here and the, and the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's, those, those smaller-scale projects that are reusing existing square footage are likely no-brainers, for lack of a better word. But not all projects are going to do that.
Right.
The laundromat, you know, someone may decide to demolish the whole thing and build a four-story building. I think at that point, even though four-story is allowed under the underlying zoning, that, I think that likely becomes problematic. that, I think that likely becomes problematic. Even if it had commercial on the first floor and residential on the second, third and fourth.
But part of the reason why we're not seeing those is because of the sewer issues.
You haven't, you weren't seeing those kinds of projects even prior to the, there's a, there's some fundamental challenges that have been talked about and documented. The primary one that comes to mind is, and Chelmsford's beginning to transition out of this, is that much of the commercial industrial property was locally owned and operated. It was, and at the time, that, you know, that, that's a fantastic characteristic to have. But those, those portfolios are beginning to mature and age out. And as they mature and age out, you'll have a lot of commercial industrial land that will become available that never was available. So that's the opportunity. But that opportunity will likely result in a risk for some people. Creating projects, having developers come in from out of town who are trying to ma-, maximize, maximize their asset in our proposing larger projects.
So what are our next steps?
I think we need to, I'm sorry.
So what are our next steps?
Yeah, I thi-, well, I, I think right now we need to table this. I mean, our next step should probably be to brainstorm what, you know, whether we want to do a fork in the road approach or whether we want to take, you know, add in units per acre. But for now, we need to get onto the regular meeting. So maybe we should table this and come back and do a, a brainstorming between now and then individually and then together for the first, maybe 20 minutes of our next work session?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's for me.
All right, so now we're gonna go to the regular agenda a bit late, sorry folks. This is the regularly scheduled September 13th, um, planning board meeting, which will be available on Zoom as long as the Zoom holds up. Right now, we're gonna open to public input. Is there anyone in the, in the room who would like to speak in public input? Speaking, speaking being relating only to issues that are not on our, um, agenda or the subject of a current pending public hearing?
Hi, Doreen Dashless-Siney Circle. Just, after just listening to you guys talk there, I just have one thing to say. While you're figuring that out, you're talking about that, wherever you talk about that, think of the implementations. You're talking about building up Chelmsford Street near the center, the center, with all that traffic. And now you're gonna build it up. Where are the parking spaces gonna be? What's the traffic gonna be like? The traffic's bad enough at the center, you're gonna put more traffic into the center? Please think about it. I mean, I live in that area and the traffic's not, you know, that great now. I don't want to see more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next on to administrative review. If there's no one else who wants to speak?
I'm just wondering if you have the TV on in the other room? There are people in there that can't hear. Thank you.
Guess we'll give it a minute for that.
Yeah, it's okay.
Or is it the next two meetings he's gonna be at?
I know he's coming to the ones that are public hearings.
He's not coming tonight.
So we just gotta make sure who's doing what.
I'll be quick.
He has a update.
Okay. You wanna go by order or not? You wanna take Hildreth first or get? Seems like everybody's here for that. I'm just guessing, well, I am.
Well, I mean, I think there's people here for, um, Littleton Road too and, and MBTA and JNC.
We'll try to move as fast as possible.
We'll try and move things along though.
So we on MBTA zoning?
Yep.
Yes.
So, so Mike from NIMCOG is on Zoom with you. I think the purpose of today's discussion was to review the NIMCOG's memo from August 28th. You have a hard copy, it's also part of the agenda. Review the scenarios. And this is all in preparation for the, the two neighborhood district meetings scheduled for the 19th and 21st. So Mike, do you want to just give a quick overview of your August 28th memo? And then move into the, the updated scenarios?
Yeah, sure. Just since the, the last time we, we met, the Office of Housing and Livable Communities did issue updated guidelines which established a mandatory mixed use district as an option as part of the MBTA communities zoning. And I was asked, Evan had asked me to research and, and see if, if this would be a, uh, potentially useful for any of the scenarios that we had previously spoken with. And basically, they, the criteria behind the, or the, some of the criteria that the state has issued is that it has to be part of a, a district or, or a location that has existing village style or, or like a downtown urban development type. So based on, on that information alone, it really doesn't seem like it's very well suited for Chelmsford. There's also a couple of requirements where you would, you, any mixed use portion that is part of the development would be permitted by, by right and it would be limited to the first floor of, of any of the buildings. And it also didn't count towards the area requirements. So it could, the units that could be produced could count towards capacity, but you still would have the, the acreage requirement that would still have to be, still have to be adhered to. So it, it is my opinion, you know, that, that this type of, that type of zone probably wasn't the best use of our, um, districts that we're gonna designate. The second part of that, uh, the, the guidelines that came out from the state basically gave a list of 13 projects or grant programs that could take in, into consideration, uh, compliance with the Section 3A zoning. So it basically, um, it said, the, the exact language is that it would take into consideration when making grant, award recommendations. So, um, so that, those are basically the two big takeaways from the, the updated guidelines. So before I go any further, does anyone have any questions or comments?
So.
Okay.
I've got a question. You were saying that this, the mixed use wouldn't be applicable for the, the, the ones that we had already selected. But would it be, would you think it's applicable for, like, Drum Hill?
I, I did also look in, Evan had, had, had raised that, that area too. And I, I didn't feel like it, it was truly in the character of, of a village style or urban type of development where you have, you have, you have mixed uses in that neighborhood already and by not having a, a commercial entity on the, the ground floor, it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a gap of amenities for pedestrian access.
And the other thing I just heard you say is that the units would count towards our requirements, but not the acreage.
Correct.
So we would still have to find acreage somewhere else and impact another area, even if we did do that mixed use area, which is weird. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
No, it doesn't make sense.
So I, not sure if we would want to do that.
Yeah, it, it's, it's basically built more for, for urban, um, excuse me, for urban settings and communities that have higher requirements for dwelling units. So you, you could have, you, it could supplement kind of some of the other area. So it might, maybe a, a less dense area could, could be offset with the additional units.
Hmm, interesting.
So at this point, we're left with the original districts that we were contemplating. And then I think Mike, in his final portion of his memo, had the potential sub-district revision to the Radisson. Which is up, up on the screen. Mike, you want to walk through that one?
Um, yeah, you know, you know, maybe I should do the, um, the entire, I'll, I'll go through the, the, the first and the third scenario that were updated now. Let's see, so scenario one, since, since the last time we met, you had asked that we remove the meeting, the parcels that were in the Meeting House Road area and add, add a parcel off of Alpine Lane to, to keep the Radisson Property District as, as a viable, uh, viable district because of the two parcel requirement. But in doing so, we, we're taking away a little bit less, a little bit more land area with the Meeting House Road parcels. So in order to, um, to make, to make the capacity requirement, we had to just slightly, um, increase the, um, density of the, the base district. Hold on one second. So, um, let's see. Yeah, so that the base district, I believe, was done at a 16 to one unit cap instead of 15 to one. And then to meet the, the capacities. And then, um, it's, let's see, scenario three. Scenario two didn't change. Scenario three, um, with the existing, there are two existing five story structures on the, the Radisson and Holiday Inn parcel. If we increase the floor area, the, the height requirement to, or height limit to five stories rather than three stories on this parcel, we could increase the unit capacity and eliminate the, the need to include the Riverneck Road sub-district. So we could achieve the, uh, capacity requirement with just the, the Radisson, Holiday Inn, and then the base sub-district which had the, um, two condo developments and the UMass Lowell parcel. And in doing so, I, I've been looking at the, um, the configuration of the lot. The, the lot's almost built out to 20% now. So if there were, if, if this was selected and it, it's, it's almost that build out now. There's some, some portions of the building which are at two stories instead of five stories. So that could be built up. But you wouldn't really be looking at any more built, uh, you know, build out on those parcels other than the renovation to, um, to, you know, to a permanent residential rather than a hotel use, so.
Wait a minute, you're assuming that, that someone doesn't come in, tear them down and build up a five unit, five story, right? Is that what you're?
Um, I mean, yeah, that's the assumption.
All right, so, okay.
But if, if they did that, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to do it as, you know, have more really of a footprint than what's already existing.
Except in height.
So if we add the UPS site into that scenario three, could we then bring that height for that sub-district back down to three stories like we had talked about before?
What's the height of the current structure?
It's five.
Five?
Five.
Yeah. Um, if, if we were to take a portion, it'd be difficult with the, the UPS site because it's, that the parcels are so large. You, you'd probably end up being over, um, capacity by subs-, by a substantial amount of units.
Is, well, if we increase the amount of land and the amount of sites, that would decrease our density, right?
Correct. But we're talking about.
It would still be at 15, but we could spread things out a little bit more rather than compressing them.
15 times however many acres, that's a lot of units.
Yeah, and I don't have the exact acreage of the, um.
92.9 of which 71 is buildable.
Yeah.
UPS takes care of everything.
And then we'd, we'd have to have at least two parcels to make up the sub-district. So you're looking at, even if you took the two smallest parcels, one of which is almost entirely undevelopable, um.
Why do we want to take a building down in height that we already have been living with for?
Because I'm just saying, if we zone it, you're making the assumption that someone's not gonna come in and tear it down and rebuild something. Like, can't go into a, like, zoning, assuming that.
They're probably gonna tear it down and rebuild it, but they're gonna build it the same height it is.
Okay, just.
I think you're right.
Well, that's what we would want them to do. We would give them the incentive to do that.
That's how we're getting some housing.
So it'd be the same, it'd be the same size structure, except for the connector would go up to the five stories. That's what I'm saying.
There'd also be an, an issue if, if you were to zone it at three stories, if there was a change of use, the, the top two floors of the, the hotel and the Radisson building, wouldn't be, you know, you'd probably have to keep the, the hotel use or, um, or it would be kind of obsolete, um, without a, a variance or, um, a special permit.
That's true.
But I think in, it, it, there really, there, there aren't many, actually, there aren't any residential butters to the Radisson Holiday Inn parcel. And I, I feel more, more likely than not that the buildings would be renovated rather than, than torn down and rebuilt. But I, I think it's, you're not gonna have a, a substantial build out based on, um, including that parcel at a five story height limit. So I don't know if that's something the board would, would want to consider and, and have, have us present as part of the, um, the neighborhood meetings taking place next, next week.
I think so, I would.
Yeah, I think that was our plan to have. Radisson, Alpine and.
But what Mike's, what Mike's asking is, um, is it, is it, which op-, which options the board prefer to be presented for Radisson? Is it the three story or is it the five story?
Five story.
Five story.
I think it would have to be the five.
Okay, so that, that, that reflects scenario three. UMass West's primary district and Radisson Alpine Lane, secondary district. Lane secondary district.
So then we don't present the Riverside at all?
No, those are going to be presented. Those are going to be presented, but I, I mean, the board hasn't really prioritized anything yet. The way we stand today is, the board's identified two scenarios, four districts, two districts in each scenario, and the board itself hasn't had a discussion as to which one you prefer. You're going out to the neighborhood.
Three scenarios.
Three scenarios, I'm sorry. You're going out to the neighborhood to present and receive feedback. So as part of the prep for next week, I believe we have an agenda, a draft agenda. Just want to spend a couple of minutes on that.
Yeah.
Mike, you want to walk through that?
Yeah.
Actually, before we get to that, I have one more question I just realized is a little confusing. So the Alpine Lane-Radisson sub-district, we're talking as five stories for scenario three. What is it in scenario one?
It's at three stories.
Okay.
But it incorporates all land.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, so for the neighborhood meetings, we're basically looking to break it down into a few, five sections. First would be an introduction from town leadership welcoming the neighborhood, kind of explaining why compliance with MBTA law is important to the town, and then segue to the NIMCOG presentation and introductions from NIMCOG. It'll probably be myself and the executive, the assistant director, Kelly Lenema. And then we'll do an overview of our organization, what we've been contracted to do for the project, and then go into kind of an educational overview on MBTA communities, what the law is, why the law was enacted, what the requirement is for Chelmsford, and then clarify what the unit capacity means, how it's measured, explain the difference between capacity and development, and then go through density requirements and what it means for by right development approval. And then kind of explain what non-compliance would mean for Chelmsford with grant considerations and potential fair housing litigation. And after that, we'd kind of break down into the whatever neighborhood we're dealing with, going over the potential scenario and the impacts, potential build-out, and then solicit feedback and answer questions from the neighborhood residents.
I also think it would be important as part of the agenda to talk about the process to date and what other sites we have considered.
Okay.
And maybe not necessarily go into detail as to why we didn't pick them, but maybe have a slide or some information as to why some of the other sites that we considered weren't brought forward.
Okay.
Because I've already received some suggestions from residents about other potential sites that we could consider. That might be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any other area that you'd like us to focus in on those meetings?
I think one thing I'd like to do is to be sure to communicate that, to emphasize that this is to create zoning, not to create units, unlike, say, a comprehensive permit. So that what we're doing here is we're not creating units in town, we're just creating zoning by which those could potentially be created. I think that's an important distinction, and I think that's important to communicate. And I think the other thing that's important to communicate also is that, that basically, and each person can comment on what they think about this or not, but I don't want it to be communicated as, the planning board has a really great idea about how to increase housing in Chelmsford. I don't, we're just doing this because we need to comply.
Right.
We're taking advantage of it as best we can, but really, more than anything, we're not doing this because somehow we had this great idea that we just needed more housing here. I know the state feels that way, but I don't necessarily feel that way, so that was-
And I think we're trying to minimize the impact on Chelmsford-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
In this process.
Yeah, I think that's especially the distinction between zoning for capacity and zoning the development, the development of the units is going to be something that we focus on pretty much in good effort.
You had mentioned twelve areas of funding. Could you kind of lay that out also?
Yeah, and I'm going to provide Mike and the board with the dollar amounts for each of those grants. A couple of logistical items. All the mailers have gone out. Town meeting reps have been notified via email. I think, Chair, you wanted to discuss with the board to what extent sending an invitation to other boards and committees in town. You want to talk about that right now?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that the more, I mean, I basically feel like this isn't, this isn't optional, like, we have to comply, as Joel just stated. And, you know, given that that's the baseline parameter, I think the more stakeholders we have engaging with us and hopefully supporting our proposals, and, I mean, we need to get as much buy-in as we can. And so I think to the extent that we engage with others in the decision-making process of just, you know, picking districts and sub-districts will lead us, you know, to have a better likelihood of success.
So what I think what you're contemplating tonight is sending out an email invitation to FinCom, Select Board, Concom, all the boards.
Yeah.
The school board.
With the understanding that those boards may choose to attend, but they haven't met as a board to discuss anything.
Right.
Which makes sense.
And if they're gonna come, obviously, if they're gonna come, it's more than-
Right.
Two people, they'll have to post it.
Later on in the process, the board may want to receive formal feedback from boards and committees. We haven't got to that point yet.
Right. No, I think that would be probably something we might want to engage with the other boards soon after the neighborhood meetings.
Right, yeah, right. Other logistical items, my guess is the presentation's no more than an hour. Should leave a good hour minimum. These sessions are scheduled from seven to nine. If they go longer, that's fine. The room setups, the nineteenth will be in this room. The twenty-first will be at the senior center. Both setups will have the planning board basically front and center. I would suggest that Mike can and should present what he's outlined tonight, but I think it's fair to say that there may be questions that are better suited for the board to answer and for Mike to answer. Anything else logistically that we need to cover?
Who's the, who's Chelmsford leadership?
So-
What was the question?
So first, the first item-
Great question.
Presentation by Chelmsford leadership.
Initially, Mike had asked if myself or Paul Cohen would do the intro. I'm not going to be available on the nineteenth. I think ideally, someone from the planning board could do that intro.
I think Chris should do it.
Chris, you're all over.
I think the chair should do it.
You are all-
One of you can figure it out. I think it's a very short, brief intro. And I think the beauty of these two sessions, as the board has designed these, is that we're not making any decisions. You're simply presenting and seeking feedback. So there's no, there's no time clock, there's no urgency. We're truly in an iterative process at this point.
Can I just clarify, you're gonna invite all those boards?
Yeah, I'll send the email tomorrow.
Not for this meeting, the nineteenth.
To both. They can, they can choose which one they want to attend.
They'll never fit in this facility.
Well, remember, a good number of them are TM reps anyway, so they've already-
No, I know, but we're asking for the neighborhood to come. Why wouldn't we just meet with the neighborhood first, get an idea of where we're going, and then bring it out to the boards?
It's more of a town-wide thing, though, really.
We're gonna zoom in, that's fine, but the senior center, I can understand, totally understand that one. But if you just have the boards here, it's gonna fill this whole-
Yeah, too late.
We have the overflow room and I-
They're having a great time in there.
Yeah.
All right.
Just before we get off this topic, I just wanted to talk about scenario two for a moment, if I could, just UPS. So just as we're considering all these, after some previous discussions, I did some research. I know, like, one of the things that was brought up with the UPS site is that it is one of our largest taxpayers in town. It is one of our largest employers. I did a little research on the largest taxpayers, and so if you look at a list of the town's top ten, UPS for the fiscal year that just passed is number seven. So it's got a, you know, a value of like just over twenty-one million dollars. I wouldn't want to see us discount this site just because, this is just my personal feeling, is that business changes rapidly. So even though UPS has occupied this site from the eighties, we all know technology changes, there are always things that change. This, the current warehouse, the distribution center that's there now, in my mind, may not always be the highest and best use for this site. And the reason I say that is if you look at the town's top taxpayers, two apartment complexes, 104 Turnpike and 225 Littleton actually have a higher assessed value than this UPS site, and two others are slightly below UPS, but also have high values. So my point to this discussion is, just because there's a distribution center there now, and it's been there for maybe, you know, thirty-plus, forty years, it may not always be there. So I just wouldn't want to see us discount that site just because of, you know, perceived tax revenue.
And I just want to add to it, like, when you look at the commercial tax rates, right, there is commercial Class A, right, commercial B, warehouse is the lowest of that. And this site, which has a lot of acreage, a significant portion of the site is parking lot. So it's not being taxed at the highest rate, whereas an apartment complex would act, and I've actually reached out to the assessor's office to get this, I wanted to get this comparison for tax dollars of what would generate more tax dollars, whether a apartment complex or the UPS site. Because when you're looking at, you know, the warehouse type of building and all of the parking lot, to say that, and I think this, like, we have a challenge here, this is UPS is a major employer for the region, a large contributor to the commercial tax base, we're not, we need to really look at the dollars and cents there, because I'm not sure that's an accurate statement, but that's a challenge.
I guess I have a related question, which I don't know if it's not very, I mean, I don't know the answer at all. But what is the zoning of UPS, so that if UPS were to decide to leave or move to a larger facility or something, what would, is it in the CIOID?
It's, underlying zoning is IA, limited industrial.
IA, but not in the CIOID.
It's in the CIOID, but it does not extend to multifamily. So UPS site does not, it's not afforded any of the multifamily incentives under the 129 overlay or the CIOID.
So the only way to get housing in there was the MBTA.
Correct, or a different overlay.
Or if we did a different one.
If we do-
I say we cross that bridge when it comes.
Yeah. I mean-
That's my two cents on it.
Because I personally wouldn't want it necessarily to be that dense if it was going to become housing, because it's so large.
It depends on the housing style. Again, all of the, all of your locally zoned and approved multifamily, 240 Littleton was twenty units an acre, 104 Turnpike, I think, was eighteen units an acre. So it's all about the architecture and the layout.
But to Joel's point, we're not approving a project. We're not approving, we only have a concept. We have no idea what this is. It's just a-
Correct.
It's the law right now, and we have to implement it.
Correct. Again, we've had this discussion. Some members are viewing the strategic, the strategy differently than others. The board has talked about this, but it hasn't really come down on any particular consensus on a strategy. I think what the scenarios are saying is that there's some opportunity in some of the scenarios, and there's less opportunity in others, which is probably a good strategy. And we've also talked about that once we decide on a district, if there is real opportunity, we can create dimensional as well as architectural standards. That may or may not be very relevant based upon the scenarios that are agreed upon. It's all kind of to be determined.
And we can, like, so something like a UPS, which has a lot of acreage, has wetlands next to it, right? We can make it so it's not, it doesn't become more dense than what's required, correct? Based off of the ratio, right? So we can limit it, we can, right, so we can cap it at that site, and because it's such a large acreage area, it may not even notice it. That's all, again, I just want to make sure, like, my concern is that line is underlined in the presentation about UPS is a major employer for region and a large contributor to the commercial tax base. I just want to make, like, we're saying that's a challenge, and we're underlining that, but I want us to be certain that that's truly the case. So I have reached out to the assessor's office.
So I'm just saying, it's kind of a wash when it comes to the tax base.
Yeah, but I've also-
The employment part is different, but the tax base is different.
Yeah, and my only, I mean, I don't have anything personal against UPS. I'm just saying, just looking at it as a resident, you know, a lot, there are hundreds of jobs there, but are they, are the earnings, are the salaries for those jobs, are they equal or higher than other types of jobs that we might want to bring into the community for business? So that's something I think you have to look at.
Okay, so I think we're in good shape for next week?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Great. Thanks, board.
I'm gonna be late. I'm potentially gonna be late for the twenty-first. I have a meeting that goes right up till seven, so I'll be joining.
Next up, we have a public hearing for the Littleton Road zoning article, citizens petition for Fall Town Meeting. Is there someone here?
Hi, guys. My name is Mike, Michael Smith. I live here in Chelmsford. I live on the proposed petition that I put forward. I spoke to, did I say hi to everybody? I don't know what the, I'm awfully nervous up here. I don't, I don't get to stand up in front of a podium very often. But, yeah, I talked with a bunch of my neighbors, and I'm sure you guys have it all in front of you. We live in a section of 110 that zoned R B, residential B, with a, I think it's a minimum of one acre, forty thousand square feet. A lot of the, a lot of the structures, a lot of the houses on this strip, they're structures on non-conforming lots. So I think if you guys, I'm not sure if you're looking, if you're looking from Ginger Ale Plaza and you go back that way out to, I think it closes off at the Lime Quarry, I think it is, yep. The whole point of this is, anybody that's in here, that if they want to make a modification to their home, if they want to invest, if they want, there's a, there's a whole procedure. There's, what do you call it? There's, there's the ZBA, there's attorney's fees, there's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of jumping through hoops. And I, my, well, just me and talking to my neighbors, I think if, if we could take a look at this, and because what's really on the ground is not R B, there's, it's not there. So I think R C would provide a lot of relief to a lot of my neighbors. And that's, that's why I'm here before the board. Um, so I'm, let's see, what else, what else can I say here? Okay, the Chelmsford Plan, let's see, okay, so, yeah. Um, okay, the Chelmsford, um, duh, 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 let's see, uh, okay, so, yeah, um, yeah. R B, R B residential B districts, these are low-density, single-family. I would like a little help here. Because if I keep babbling on, okay, you know what, it's gonna turn into comedy hour. And we don't want that to happen. So do I, do I stand here, or do I?
Stick around.
Okay.
Stick around. So, just putting some data together on, on what this is. So the, the area in question is, it's basically village, a village neighborhood. And it was built up long, long, long ago as a village neighborhood. Back in the sixties, the last time they did change the zoning, the zones, we increased the size of the lot requirements to slow down development. And that was great for new development, but what we did is effectively made everything on the ground non-conforming. And this is one of those neighborhoods that is just plain entirely non-conforming because of it. It was built up as in-town lots, there's small lots, there's a lot, there's seventy-five percent of the houses that were built before nineteen thirty-eight, and I'll get to why that's important. The, we actually have eleven percent of our thirty-five residential properties that conform to the land requirements of residential B. What we want to change it to is residential C. Both of them are entirely residential, they're not business zones. But residential C requires half an acre, not a full acre. Now, is that gonna fix all of our lots? Heck no, because we've got a lot of lots that are even smaller. They're village lots, that's, that's smaller than residential C. But it fixes, like, four hundred percent more than currently comply, and that's a big deal. So for the folks here, the differences between residential B and residential C. Residential B requires forty thousand square feet, it's about an acre. Residential C that we want to change it to is twenty thousand square feet, it's half an acre, all right? Residential B, current, allows single families and conversion of old dwellings. Residential C allows two families, and, single families, two families, and conversion of dwellings. In terms of the conversion of dwellings, the current situation makes you go to the Z B A and get a special permit. And if they decide to give it to you, you have to stay in your current footprint. You can't add on to do it, you, you gotta put it into what currently exists. And it's all those nineteen thirty-eight and before properties that qualify for that. Under the proposed zoning, you only have to go to the building inspector. You don't have to get these special permits to go to do a conversion. It cuts down on the bureaucracy, it costs tremendously, it costs, it cuts down on the ifiness. And it allows you to maybe put an expansion on the back to fit it in. All right. So there's some differences in setbacks. So the setbacks of what's proposed is smaller than the setbacks of what's, what's currently on the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah. What else can I tell you about it?
So it's setbacks from setbacks.
It's relief from setbacks, it's relief from Z B A for converting old dwellings. It's relief from, it's relief from that one acre requirement.
And it's, it's, it really, what's, what's on the ground right now is, is not represented in the zoning. And it's, it's outdated in my mind, but.
Well, it was, it was never, this zoning never fit that area in the first place.
Okay.
And it simply never did.
Nancy, what's the relevance of the nineteen forty-eight? You mentioned you wanted to get back to that.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, what was that?
So the relevance of the nineteen thirty-eight is that conversion of dwellings clause that allows properties built before nineteen thirty-eight, or up through thirty-eight, when the zoning was first put in place in Chelmsford, to be converted to two families. And it allows it in an R B zone with Z B A approval. It allows it in an R C, R C zone, de facto, by right.
Where is that? Do you know where that is?
Yeah, it's Article one ninety-five thirteen.
Okay, because.
Nancy was a former member of the planning board, so.
Yeah.
No, 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 I understand that, but there was a situation.
No, I know, I'm just telling the public.
One ninety-five dash thirteen?
Yeah.
Because it was a property that did come up.
So Nancy, so you're saying, because of the homes that are nineteen thirty-eight or younger, or older, let's call it.
It's like seventy-five percent of them.
You're allowed in the R B zone to make them two-family.
That's right. So, so they're allowed to make a two-family.
So are all these homes in this location?
But it requires a whole lot of rigmarole with the Z B A.
I know, okay.
And you have to do it within your current footprint.
If you look at the, there is a lot of multifamilies on that stretch.
Well, actually, yeah, I mean, we already, twenty percent of our properties already are two families.
Yep. Twenty percent of the properties here.
Twenty, twenty percent of the properties already are two families in the area. So it's not odd for our area, I mean, it's, it's.
So this is heading, this is heading towards the town meeting in the fall, right?
This is headed to town meeting in the fall.
And you're looking for a seal of approval from the board, is that it?
We are looking for public input tonight, that's what this meeting's all about, and we are looking for endorsement from the.
The sale of approval.
But you're not required to have the seal of, you don't want to vote.
Input's great, you know?
We go whether, we go to town meeting, whether you give us a seal of approval or not.
Recommendation to town meeting from the planning board is required.
A positive recommendation.
It is required.
Oh, it is required.
Yes, yes.
So let's open up the public hearing.
Well, I mean, a recommendation or a lack of recommendation. We have to make a.
A vote to recommend.
Vote to, you can make a vote to recommend, or if you don't have it, you can make a vote not to recommend.
But you have to make a vote.
We have to make a vote.
Yeah.
Tonight, okay.
It doesn't have to be tonight.
You don't have to do it tonight, but you have to make a vote before town meeting.
For a reason.
So I have a, probably another dumb question, but looking at one ninety-five dash thirteen, if this were to be, if this district were to become R C, they would still be restricted by the requirement that the exterior of the home, of the structure, not changed from the current character of a single-family dwelling, is that correct?
Under one ninety-five thirteen.
That's under an R B, but they want to change to R C.
But if we go to R C.
That's our, our B. See, they can make a two-family.
If you go to R C.
Cut the lot in half, and if they have enough, they can make a two-family.
Two-family is allowed by right, so you actually could modify it.
And what problem are you trying to solve?
No, under R B, you have to stay within your footprint.
R C.
Under R C, the change to, you could actually expand it, because it would be a two-family that's by right under R C.
But if it was, if it was before nineteen thirty-eight, it would be, presumably it would be a historic building that would require an inventory and.
So, yes, that's right. You would have to go through the historical commission to make a modification to the building.
Or to raise it.
Or to raise it. And you can bet that they would not approve raising it, and you might get into a moratorium and et cetera.
And you'd have to wait, and you'd have to wait, how long is that, a year?
A one-year. So if you want to raise any of those buildings, if the historical commission determines it to be of significance, and they will not approve raising it, then what they do is put a one-year delay, demolition delay on it. And that's no matter what zone you're under.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's not affected by this whatsoever.
Nancy, last time you were here, I had asked about the fact that there were sixteen signatures on the petition out of thirty-six properties. And I asked if you were aware of what the sentiment was of the other twenty residents. Do you have any information?
I'm gonna pass that to Mike.
Hi, I'm sorry, what's your first name?
Chris.
Chris, nice to meet you, Chris. Yeah, no, I, I walked around, like, I live over there, I, I walked up and down. Some people weren't home, some people, some people have busy lives, or, or they, they're not really concerned. Or, but, but the town did send out a pamphlet to everybody alerting them. Again, it's a benefit to the other folks that maybe didn't sign. I looked at what was needed from the town for me to file this petition. And I was walking around on a hot Sunday morning, so I kind of like, just was, you know, I, I, I got the signatures to, to file the petition, so, but, yeah, again, looking at the whole, the whole footprint, the whole, the whole outlay, it's, it's, I see it as a benefit for, in my opinion, if, if someone wants to have, like, to do an addition or something, or, or instead of having to jump through hoops and stuff like that. And again, if there's anybody from the audience that would like to step up and speak, and, you know, if you guys, but, I gotta shut up now.
You gotta shut up now. So I think it's time that we hear from.
I had one more question.
I have one question too.
The other, the other question that was posed the last meeting you were here was whether you'd consider a village zone here instead of the R C. Because as you mentioned last meeting, and again tonight, it really was designed as a village, as opposed to anything else. And so I was wondering if that.
I think that's a better question for me than Mike.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah. I can probably answer that better. And I've considered it, and I'd like to go there, but not today. This is, this is a, a current fix for a problem we have on the street. This, this community is stressed. I mean, we've got a lot of old buildings, they need investment. And we have a really, really bad traffic problem that we have, for years, asked the Board of Selectmen to help out with in terms of the asphalt plant traffic. It, it just stresses the neighborhood. They can't help. So, yeah, this is, this is a quick fix. It is maybe not the ultimate fix. And as I told Deirdre in the previous meeting, I would be happy to do research and help with a projected village zoning zone. But we need a fix now. We need an improvement now.
Okay.
Nancy, you keep bringing up the traffic issue and the asphalt plant, and you want a quick fix. So that kind of tells me that you're not happy with the neighborhood, and you're looking for zoning that would help make your property more valuable to a developer who would then come in and build two families. I mean, that's what it sounds to me. You keep telling me the problem is the traffic and the asphalt, which kind of turns.
Doesn't jive in my brain.
Doesn't, I'm sorry, but, like, it sounds to me that this would be, this would help maximize your investment.
Anita, I am not looking to move, thank you.
But she has a two-family already.
I have a two-family.
Then, well, we have.
How is it fixed?
Like, we have a whole bunch of other R Cs that are, they're all Westlands.
Traffic's not an issue with what you're asking, is what I, I get a little confused with the traffic being thrown in there when you want to put two families where there's single families.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, I think it's the relief to the homeowner that wants.
Maybe it is. It's really the relief in investing. Yeah, it's the zoning.
Zoning issue.
But like, if we want to talk about traffic, I mean, I can fix it all right now. I think we should put like, an in and an off on the, on that asphalt plant right onto four ninety-five. You come in and you get off, that should have been done years ago. I can't even understand why they can't, like, do that. It's like common sense, and then you, you just, you eliminate that all through the town, but.
Okay.
That's.
We're not gonna solve that problem.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a rat hole you really don't want to go down.
No, there's another asphalt plant in North Chelmsford with the same issue.
Same issue, okay.
I just had a question, and that is, I think Mike has a business there?
I do.
If I recall, custom upholstery, I remember because you came before us for a sign when I was on the Z B A a while ago.
Yep.
But are there other home businesses or businesses along this, or is yours your only one?
I think there's, there's.
There's one commercial property. It's been in here for a, for an expansion, yeah, for a garage in the past couple of years. So we've got thirty-five residential properties and one commercial.
And it's, it's mixed use, like, it's, well, it's.
Yeah.
It's commercial and it's.
It is, is commercial and residential.
Yeah. I'd like to put up a bar, okay? Can I do that?
No.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Not under the, not under the new.
No. Well, you know what, I'll go back to my dentist, and I could start pulling teeth.
I think we need to open this up for public input.
I think it would be good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the board?
Anyone who'd like to speak on this behalf?
Or in opposition?
Good evening, board. I'm John Wojcik. I live at eighty Littleton Road. I also own a house at eighty-four Littleton Road. I've been here sixty years. Basically the same exact spot. I grew up in Nancy's house for my first seven years. My parents bought two acres of property across the street. We moved into that in nineteen seventy, been there ever since. I've got a house and a barn that need to come down. It's gonna cost me over three hundred thousand dollars just to renovate. It doesn't make sense. I come from an architectural background. My father, my father Steve was an architect here in town. We always wanted to combine the house and the barn and not change the appearance. We want to keep the house and the barn, but they gotta be new. It can't be renovated. So something like this would give us the opportunity, or give me the opportunity, to keep my roots here, to take the barn and the house down, and then build another structure that looks like a colonial house with an attached barn, similar to maybe like Maple Road, what was done over across the street from Agway. As to not change the overall, what you would call a village appearance. So that's my experience. I don't know if anybody else on the street would want to do upgrades, or maybe put an addition on their house where they could have an in-law apartment, you know, more so than what current bylaws allow. You know, maybe a rental or something, or, you know, a permanent family home. But that's, that's my situation.
So, can I ask you a question? So how, so I just looked up, you have three, it looks like a three-quarters of an acre. How does, how are you prevented from doing that at, right now? Like, what's preventing you under the current zoning to do exactly what you wanted to do?
Well, I was told they couldn't have two addresses on that property.
So you don't, okay, so you want to split it up and have two separate.
And I have, there's forty thousand square feet there.
So you have eighty.
I have eighty and eighty-four.
So eighty itself is three-quarters of an acre, and it looks like it has two dwellings on it.
It, it has a house and a garage. My garage happens to be bigger than my house.
And then eighty-four, is this one eighty-four?
It's probably two down.
And that has the house and the barn.
This is, this is eighty-four.
Yeah.
So this is almost an acre. And you can combine, if you own both of them, they're considered one, you can do it one lot. You can.
No, it's R B.
R B.
Yeah, but they can't put it, they can't combine the laws and put a duplex.
No, not a duplex, but he can put his house.
Essentially, it would be a duplex.
Oh, so you're looking, okay, so you want to, okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
Right.
I thought you wanted to renovate it as a single-family home and a garage, as a barn, all one family home. You don't, you want a duplex.
Yeah, I don't make enough money to do that.
Okay, that, that was, I was just trying to understand. Okay, that, that was, I was just trying to understand, the way I was lis- hearing you, I thought you wanted to make a bigger house with a nice barn, single-family. So you want.
No, it would be nice to have two, two family there, but again, I don't want to change what that looks like when you're driving by at seventy-five or eighty miles an hour, you know? It's, um.
Okay. No, I, I, I just wanted to understand what you were trying to do, because I was a little confused, but, okay. Thank you.
And that was my little dig on the speeds on the road.
Got it.
So if you have any questions about what that might do or help out, then let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to remind the Board, the Abutters property owners on Bridge Street were notified. I don't know if any of them are here.
Is there anyone on the Zoom that wants to speak?
Uh, doesn't appear, appears to be.
My name is Larry Gagnon. I am one of the Bridget, uh, Bridge Street Abutters. And, um, I'm for development. I, I love it. Um, I'm a builder, that's what I do. But I think this is a pretty large, uh, alteration to the zoning bylaws that benefit a few, and I don't see a benefit to the town. I, I'm an abutter to Nancy, right behind her, and currently I look out on a nice old home, a pretty substantial piece of property, and, and I see the future being uh, another two-family house right next to the houses there right now. And I see that happening to several of these lots, a gentleman that just spoke. He wants some, you know, change, uh, single-family property to two separate homes or, or multi-family property and, um, so, um, that's just my view on it. I think it's a big overly change that, uh, benefits a few. And I don't see the gain to the town. I don't think it's gonna, you know, help with traffic issues or anything like that. I love, um, you know, Mike and Nancy, they're friendly, you know, they're good neighbors. Um, Mike doesn't live there, but he's with Nancy. So, uh, anyway, that's all. I, you know, a positive guy and, but that would be my impact. And, uh, and I think other people on Long Bridge Street, even though some of them aren't here, people that are up behind the one commercial property that has more land on the end of Bridge Street, they'll be impacted as well. They'll look out at, you know, what changes might incur there, because every extra half acre will, uh, open the door to another two-family house being stuffed in there. And, um, it's just something to consider when you guys make the call on what is the good choice to do. But anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if there's no one else who wants to make a comment, I think we'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Uh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm standing.
Okay. All right, on to Three Meeting House Road, Jane.
We want to, we want to vote.
You don't, you don't have to take a vote this evening. You can, you can if you'd like to, or we can put her on the next agenda. But you have closed the public hearing.
Yeah, I. I would. I don't know, what do people want to?
You can also, you can also table and talk about it at your next meeting.
Yeah.
Do you want to table and talk about it on that meeting?
I think so.
Okay.
Why?
Why? Like, why don't we just get it over with?
Probably pretty quick.
Who, okay, who wants to table it?
No, what?
Can we do a straw poll of who wants to table it and who wants to do it now?
I'm good either way.
I guess I'm okay either way, too.
Let's discuss it now.
Okay.
Okay, let's discuss it.
So I'll go first, I guess. The only thing I think the Board should consider this is, I understand the, uh, the need of the neighborhood, but you have probably, what is the percentage of the town that's non-conforming, uh, approximately, Evan?
Upwards of eighty percent residential.
Right. So if we allow this, but you're opening the floodgates. I think there is, uh, I think it's, uh, it's the neighborhood that wants to, as you can hear, they want to, um, benefit from this change. And I think, uh, we, there's special permits that are in place and the, the zoning board of appeals are, is there for a purpose. And I think the homes that, they, that are, they, if they want to do a renovation, they want to put a two, uh, a in-law apartment in, have them go to the zoning board of appeals.
I agree with everything Mike says. Um, I think that in addition to that, only sixteen of thirty-six residents are, seem to be in favor of this. We don't know what the other twenty are, uh, feeling. So I would have a hard time voting for something that less than half of the residents on that street appear to be in favor of.
I agree with Chris, and that's what, that's the glaring thing about this, is the, um, the amount of signatures compared to how many people are actually involved. Could be apathy, could be whatever, but.
But it would be an absolute different discussion if that entire street were on that signature list.
But I still go to what Mike said, eighty percent of the town is non-conforming. There is a process here to go through the ZBA if that's the true reason why you want to do this.
And what's the benefit to the town?
Right.
And I also think that there's a better path forward with the village zone as opposed to this.
Okay, do we want to take it around for a vote? On whether we approve this petition, citizen's petition?
Do you want to recommend, to recommend or not to recommend?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion not to recommend this to town meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joel, you have to vote.
I have to vote?
Yeah, because Mike can't vote.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Your first vote?
All righty. Now, on to Three Meeting House Road, JNC.
Who the majority of these people are?
Can we take one, do we want to take the other one out of order? Because I think these people are here for.
The architect showed up for our meeting house.
Oh, okay.
Deirdre?
For two. Ziggy.
Oh.
Ziggy's in there.
Oh, yeah.
Did you send me a PowerPoint or something?
Nope, you have the plans. Yeah, everything's on, online.
All right, so we're gonna just open this hearing. Someone just want to read the agenda.
Uh, okay, so we're gonna open a public hearing on Three Meeting House Road. JNC Property Management LP requesting approval under Article twenty-one, Community Enhanced CEID um, in subsections one ninety-five dash one eleven C, Article twenty-three, Inclusionary Housing and any other permit relief as may be required to allow the conversion of existing commercial office space into eight residential apartments.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson, um, here tonight on behalf of JNC Property Management. And we have some representatives in our audience tonight. Um, both Lynn and Jacob are here. Um, I also have with me, um, the project architect, um, Jim Zagowitz. So we were here not that long ago under CEIOD applicability, um, looking for just that applicability to be entered into essentially the CEIOD overlay. And we received a positive determination, um, that this project would be by right, based on the criteria within that bylaw. Um, the site itself is about seventy thousand square feet. It's the second building on the right as you get on Meeting House Road. Um, it looks very residential in nature. Historically, uh, the two-story building, um, from what I know it to be, has been mostly medical-type uses and condominiums throughout. There's eight condos on the first floor and eight condos on the second floor. Um, JNC management owns a few of the buildings along Meeting House Road and, as you know, as with other office buildings in Chumpsford has had quite a difficult time keeping, um, the office spaces filled. Um, that being said, the eight spaces on the second floor of Three Meeting House Road, uh, they'd like to reuse under the CEIOD bylaw as multifamily housing. So we're taking the eight units that are on the second floor, the eight offices. Um, the four sort of in the middle, surrounding the core of the building, are smaller units where the outside four are larger units. The sewer calculation, based on the moratorium, allows us to stay within the sewer moratorium by having the four larger units be two beds, the four interior units being one beds. And that sewer calculation, I know the engineering department had asked for it in their letter, but it is on, um, the Grading Drainage and Utility Plan showing sort of how we got to that. Um, so we're within the sewer that was allowed by right, based on the office use. Um, within our five hundred gallons per day limitation per sewer connection, we're able to do eight, um, bedrooms in total. Or twelve, sorry, eight, four for the outside and, and four for the, um, two each for the outside and then four for the inside. So with that, um, we're here tonight with the engineering for the project, and if you can flip to the next page, um, we've done some pretty significant, keep going, one more, that's just the locus. We've done some pretty significant upgrades to the parking lot. Um, based on the difference of uses going from office to residential, we were able to bring the parking down pretty significantly. Um, the parking itself, based on the office use, requires, um, by itself fifty-five spaces just for the first floor. Um, and then there's another seventeen spaces required for the second floor when it switches from office to residential. So a significant parking reduction. Um, with that, under the CEIOD by right, we're able to go to eighty percent of that. So we are actually going from eighty-four spaces to fifty-eight spaces, um, subtracting out twenty-six spaces. So that frees up a significant amount of open space on this lot. About thirteen thousand square feet of impervious is actually being removed from the site to do this project. With that, we also had to abide by the new stormwater bylaw for the town of Chumpsford and certainly the Massachusetts Stormwater bylaw. Um, the Chumpsford bylaw allows for redevelopment to hit, um, an eighty percent TSS removal, um, and a total phosphorus removal of fifty percent. So what we've done with the existing drainage system is look to basically redirect the stormwater a little bit. Currently, right now, it all is collected in catch basins on site. Catch basins then discharge the water through pipes. There's a series of detention basins on site for the development. Um, and that's where the water goes now. So in the post-development, what we're looking to do is, is basically capture that stormwater in different system. We're looking at a rain guardian to a focal point. Um, what that does is it allows us to capture the stormwater, clean out all the trash and any of the larger, um, items, um, before it gets into the focal point. And then essentially do that cleaning of the stormwater before that water then goes back into the system. So we were able to sort of intercept the water that happens, the stormwater that flows there now, capture it, treat it, and put it back into that system. So that's all part of this proposal also. Um, we don't have any plans, um, at this point to upgrade the sewer line in or the water lines in, but our engineering hasn't been done on the plumbing yet. So we will be doing the engineering on the plumbing. Um, we have had some conversations with the Center Water District as part of that. Um, they had issued an original letter saying that they had issues with the development. Um, when I talked to the distribution manager, it was essentially they wanted to know the details relative to the construction or the plumbing that was going to be happening on the inside of the building, which we don't typically have until after we have a permit between essentially this permit and building permit. So essentially, we talked about going in there. I know he issued a second letter to meet with him after permit approval once we engage with the plumbing engineer to make sure that the Chumpsford Water District is happy with both the metering, uh, the size of the lines and that we're, we're buying our products, um, from the Chumpsford Center Water District. Um, so with that, um, we're also doing a lot of significant improvements to the vehicular, um, movements through the site and also the pedestrian movements through the site. Right now, it's laid out very strangely. If you drive into the parking lot, there's essentially three dead-end parking lots off to the left. So to turn around, if you get to the end and there's no parking, you're doing a three-point turn, um, which was very strange. So when we started to look at this parking lot layout, it was really important that we add the ability to turn. So you could see, if you look from the existing conditions to the plan that Evan has up right now, you can see we've added an aisle where there's currently parking essentially at that northern, you could see the arrows going in both directions. So there's a full circulation within the parking lot now, which doesn't exist there today. Um, we tried to utilize as much of the existing pavement and parking lot as we could, um, as to not sort of reinvent the whole site. So essentially that back or that third kind of parking bay is what we've taken away from the project and added a park back there. And we've also taken away another dead-end parking area to the north of the building. That's between this building and the larger building that fronts on four ninety-five, uh, Meeting House Road at the back of the site, the one with the, um, I believe that one has the clock in it that you see from four ninety-five. So actually, when you leave, when you go from this building to the next building, there'll be a beautiful landscaped area now there on the right, too, instead of that smaller parking lot. What we also did was really look at pedestrian connectivity. Um, currently now, you leave the building, walk out on a sidewalk, and there's a sidewalk against that side of the curb, but then the sidewalk disappears. So we looked at all of the, um, accessible spaces. We regraded them and looked at their location to make sure that they were adequate and that they met all current requirements. We looked at the ramping to make sure that the ramping met all the current requirements, um, the striping and the signage. And then we made sure that when looking at the parking lot, we also extended pedestrian connectivity across the aisle between the parking lot, um, spaces along that middle landscape island. And then all the way back to both the new dumpster enclosure that's at the back corner of the site and also to the park. So that there's accessibility to essentially the doors, um, all around the building through the parking lot, all the way to where somebody who might, um, live on the second floor can accessibly get all the way to the dumpster to get rid of their trash and/or also use the open space. Um, we've also provided a new lighting plan and pretty significant landscape plan, if you see that. Um, most of the vegetation on this lot right now is really around the exterior and around the building. I know if you've been down there, you'll see how incredibly beautifully it's, it's kept right now, the landscaping and the lawn, certainly around all of their buildings, um, looks very nice and, and very well taken care of. Um, we're looking at keeping all that vegetation around the building and not changing any of that. There's a pretty substantial buffer along the side property line and the rear property line, which buffers them from the hotel. Um, and the businesses on Alpine Lane. Um, that is gonna stay. Um, I don't believe there's any trees that we need to get rid of to do this construction. We're only adding, and I believe we're adding, an additional nineteen trees to the site. And that's just trees and trees alone. There's a significant amount of landscape shrubs, um, herbaceous material, um, and evergreens that are also being added. So to really beautify the open spaces and really sort of contribute to the aesthetics of Meeting House Road, um, and also to be more welcoming to residents that may live on the second floor. Um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Jim to talk a little bit about the building. Do you have the building plans up there too, Evan, just to give you a little bit of a information about that, and then I can come back and sort of wrap up.
Can I just ask one quick question that you showed the area that you said is parking now and you're gonna put in landscaping and so forth? Was that a pool?
No, it's not. No, it's just a walkway that kind of meanders around the exterior of the site.
It looked kind of like a big detention basin.
No, no. Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Zagowitz. I'm with the MZO Group Architects out of Stoneham, Mass. Could you slide the, the, do we have a slide that shows the actual floor plan with the shaded, uh, floor areas below? If you don't, that's okay. I can talk right through the last one.
What would it be labeled?
Uh, it would be.
Elevations?
No. That's okay. Well, if you can just go back to the floor plans, I can walk you through it. So essentially, uh, what can I tell you about the building? It's an existing two-story wood-framed, uh, type-five construction building. It is a sprinkled, uh, structure. Right now, the existing floor plan consists of about eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-one gross square feet. That's to the exterior face of the perimeter of the building. On the second floor, we end up with a net square footage of about ten thousand four hundred and five square feet. That's because of the giant holes in the floor at the two staircase ends of the building. And at the main street entrance, there's a two-story atrium-type space, um, at the lobby. Um, as Katie mentioned, we plan to redevelop the second floor into, uh, four two-bedroom units and four one-bedroom units. and four one-bedroom units. The two-bedroom units will be about 1,269 square feet. Large living room, dining area, kitchen, obviously, two bedrooms. Master bedroom with a captured bath and a common bath on the outside. The one-bedrooms are, they range in space from about 920 square feet to a little over 1,000. The ones closest to the elevator are the, obviously, the smaller ones. The larger ones, the 1,000-square-foot units have a little extra space in there. We have two separate units shown in this plan. We have yet to decide which way we're going to go with those two units on the larger side of the corridor. One of them has a little bit of a home office-type space, a den space we found through the pandemic and recent years since. A lot of people like that, especially in a one-bedroom unit. They need a little extra space, some place to put their desk in, you know, work-type space. What else can I tell you about the building? There's, the design intent on this building is to change no or none of the exterior fenestration, other than to replace the windows in their current locations. They're actually pretty good-sized windows. I think they'll meet the egress requirements fairly easily. If anything, we'd want to maybe squeeze a couple of windows down, but we're not going to do that, only because of they're being bathroom-type spaces. But we can accomplish the same thing with shades and other interior-type improvements. Let's see, so the anticipated construction will entail a full gut reno of that second floor. We'll have all-new exterior wall insulation. We'll have improved roof, roof-ceiling-assembly insulation. All-new heating and air conditioning for the units on the second floor. All those will be brought up to the current stretch code that Chumsford has adopted. You'll get all LED lighting throughout and all the high-energy efficiency products that go with it. We have engaged A9 Green Total Energy out of Lexington as our HERS writer for the project. And they will be, they've already seen the plans and are engaged, looking at this thing. If we can get approval, they will be telling us exactly what we'll need to do to reach all the energy requirements of the stretch code and whatever Chumsford has in place. So I guess that's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Are you planning on replacing, you mentioned the windows, the windows on the first floor and the second floor? Or all just the second floor?
At this point, we'd just be replacing the second floors in the units that we're going to be ripping apart, top to bottom. But that's a conversation we could have with the owners when the time comes.
And then per the plans, I don't see it on the elevations, but where are you planning to put the air conditioning compressors?
Well, this stuff will probably go right up on the roof. There's a large flat spot.
Oh, there is a flat roof up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you look close at the east elevation there, you can probably see a couple of them poking up over the top. Those are currently existing large rooftop units. Ours would be considerably smaller than that. I think we'd be tackling the spaces on a per-unit basis. So the package, the equipment that we'd have up there would be much, much smaller.
So no equipment around the building outside?
I'd rather not. At this point, we'd like to just use the roof.
Okay.
So with that, I think one last comment. We've met with the Chumsford Housing. And Evan, I'm not sure, did you receive a letter from them, based on the advisory committees?
Did not receive a letter yet.
Okay. But it's my understanding that we had a positive
Correct.
conversation with them. Two of these units will be affordable, per the Inclusionary Housing bylaw. So two out of the eight will be affordable.
Do we know which two?
What's that? Well, it says specifically that you have to space them out, so I assume one will be a two and one will be a one.
Okay.
And what's the category? Is it the 50%?
It's 50% if it's rental, right. It's 80% if it's for sale.
Katie, I missed it earlier. You might have mentioned earlier, who occupies the first floor? What type of business?
There's different businesses in each of the units. I believe a lot of them are medical. Is that correct?
Yes.
Doctors and dentists.
And a couple of real estate.
I think throughout, yeah, I think throughout the development, there's some of that, too.
The JNC owns all four of the buildings, or?
One, three, one, three, and four.
One, three, and four, okay. And what, can you tell me again, what was the number of parking spaces that are going to be eliminated?
26.
26?
Yep. So there is, I believe I counted 84 there now, and there's 58 proposed. I'm not counting the ones along the property line because they actually belong to one meeting house. So the ones on the south side of the plan there, you can see the line, the dark line right above those, those actually don't belong to the uses at Three Meeting House. So those stay with, if you look at the decisions from one, those actually go with One Meeting House.
Okay. But so the first floor requires 55 and the second floor requires only 17?
Right. It's one per 200 square feet on the first floor. I actually took the entire first floor, so I might actually even be able to net that down and get it a little bit smaller. And then 1.5 per one bed, two per two bed, and one per three units on the second floor brought me to 17.
So the second floor currently would presumably require 55 as well, correct, or no?
Right.
I mean, at the moment, so it would be...
Right, so it would be under, potentially, right now.
Okay. So 110, okay, whatever.
Are the parking spaces for residents versus clients for the downstairs going to be marked or just open?
They're not planned to be marked. I mean, typically, the uses, having these two uses together are actually typically opposite. So we're not feeling that there's a need to mark them at this time. I'm sure once they get used to, once the tenants are in there and if it becomes obvious that they need that, then certainly we can look into that.
I noticed on the internal plans, unit 1C, 1 and 1C have HVAC and water closets?
Yes.
Is that for those units or is that for the entire?
That would be for those units.
Okay. Because I don't see that marked on the other ones.
We'll get them in there.
And then on the external, exterior plans, I noticed that there was a construction entrance on the north side, but there was none for the south side. So how are the construction vehicles going to get to that back?
There was one at both sides. Could we go to that plan quickly?
I think I missed it.
Yeah, there needs to be another one on the south side, too. Well, you know what? There isn't one on the south side because it's paved.
I was, and that was going to be my question.
No, this is all being demoed.
Okay.
So we wanted to make sure when it's demoed that it's rocked and lined so that they're not dragging things in and out. But this is only going to be used for a small amount of time until this is stable. But this is already stable, and we're not planning on ripping that pavement up, so there won't be a need for that.
But you're going to be doing work on the backside, so how are you going to protect the pavement?
Right. So what we should probably add is, along our sawcut line, add an area of stone in there to make sure that there's no, it wouldn't be a sort of a typical construction entrance, but there may be a pad of stone that we'll want to do between the areas that we're sawcutting. Some of them are a little funky, like a lot of them, we really tried to keep it as small as possible. So a lot of it might not need to be handled by stone. It might be something that we kind of have to watch and wait and see. We're going to line all of the open catch basins with sediment bags so that basically nothing's getting into them during construction. But we may have to, because it's really these tiny little areas here. Here, we're looking to sawcut and keep it as close as possible. So it shouldn't be too bad. But we can certainly work that into, what we will be doing is we're more of a pollution prevention plan because we're over 40,000, I believe, with total disturbance. But we'll check into that. And there are erosion control.
But in terms of protecting the pavement on the front part of that, how are you going to protect that from getting damaged and having to redo the entire pavement?
So I don't anticipate there, a lot of this stuff is coming out. I imagine we can use, we don't have to use, we're not building a building. We're not doing a lot of concrete work. I think we can just use some of the smaller trucks and some of the smaller. We're just going to have to be careful, right? We're going to want to try to keep this pavement intact and keep it well-preserved. And it may be at the end of this, that it may be that the owner chooses, depending on the investment, to be able to basically do the rest of it. But for now, keeping it tight.
Evan, I noticed that the DPW had a lot of concerns. Do we have any indication of a follow-up or a follow letter?
If I may, we just received those yesterday, or Monday, actually, late in the day. We've actually already prepared the response letter. I wouldn't say there's a lot. I think regarding the Aquafor Protection District, we're using the rain guardian and the focal point. We've already prepared a very large package to say that that's okay in the Zone 2 for a different project in Chumsford. We're going to supply them with the same information for this project. I think a lot of them basically refer back to that, where it says it doesn't meet that standard. Everything else, we've answered already to go tomorrow. I didn't want to issue any sort of a package between Monday and today, assuming that there may be additional provisions to the plans, so. But I believe, we've already talked to Sheila in engineering about the letter and just referred back to the fact that she said one standard hadn't been met. And she said if we supply the package for the rain guardian and focal point, then that goes away.
And then I think they were looking for the O&amp;M to include the detention pond, too.
Right. So we can talk to, right, so we can certainly add that. We can talk to JNC and find out what they do for it now and bring in those new compliance documents into our O&amp;M. And she had asked that the O&amp;M be placed on the plans, which typically, in some towns and communities, we do that. Other times, it's a standalone document. We'd be happy to just basically cut and paste those onto the plan sheets, too. And then the sewer calc, there was a paragraph related to sewer, which we had already put on the plans. She just might have missed it, so we're just going to go over that with her also. I believe besides that, there was a letter from Fire. I think that was okay. It talks about sprinklers. There was a letter from Water, which I discussed, building, police, and then Housing Advisory, I guess, which we'll be getting.
So can I have a question about this? Because I would have been interested in feeding some questions to the peer review prior to it happening, but since it's already happened prior to the opening of the hearing, which I assume we'd first hear it, then I would look at it, provide comments, if I had any. But it's already happened, so, you know, I guess, I guess, I guess a question would be, in general, if we want to do that, then do we need to review, like, say, DPW? Do we need to view the application and DPW comments before the first hearing to provide them? Like, what's the timing of, you know? In other words, I want to be able to get questions that I have into the peer review before they do it, as opposed to afterward. And then, and I want to hold things up, so I want to make these as efficient as possible. But, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't as energetic as Chris was, apparently. So I guess my question would be, like, what, like, in general, is that what we want to do? Do we want to, like, when do you, when do you turn on DPW for peer review? Like, when they get the plans?
So at this point, DPW lets me know on a project-by-project basis if they are interested or have the in-house capacity. So on this one, they indicated that they could do the in-house stormwater review. If there's nothing preventing, there's nothing preventing you or any other board member from submitting specific questions at this point.
Right. But if I wanted to do it before they started, how much before, like, when do they start?
DPW tells applicants they need as much time as possible, by a minimum, I think it's two weeks.
I mean, I think you said he needed a week for, they needed a week for the review, but these were submitted to the town a month ago. So they've been in the town for four weeks.
Okay. And we, I assume we get them at the same?
You get them, well, it's usually been when we post the agenda, but this past agenda, I sent them out earlier, which I'm going to try to do more often.
Engineering stated they received them the Friday before last.
Right. So like, moving forward, if you get them two weeks prior to, and you want to submit your questions, you can submit them to me, regardless of whether who's doing the review, we can get them over to them.
Yep. Okay. But, yeah.
But we're not voting tonight, so you wouldn't be holding any?
No, no, but, yeah, no, I mean, but it's that...
Each project is evolving a little differently.
Yeah. I mean, but you, but you like to get your, if there's something, like, for example, that I wanted them to take a particular look at, that way, they can know that when they look at it, as opposed to look at it, provide comments, and then get something saying, oh, can you look at this? You know, and it may be that they might do something a little bit differently, or maybe not. You know, but at least, you know, so I'm just wanting to get, like, in a good timeframe, so it's an efficient process, you know?
So the message I'm hearing is you'd rather get the plans sooner rather than later.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and just like a little bit before DPW.
Wouldn't we have comments after the professional engineer looks at it? As the town professional engineer comes with his recommendations? And then if you have comments based on, why would we wait for your comments first and then have the review done? I mean, I understand the efficiency of that.
No, it's more, it's more, no, I, yeah, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to subvert that. I just more mean that if I have some questions, that that way, they can include those in what they look at so that they don't have to address that afterward. If whatever they come up with, you know, there's a particular issue they raised or something for us, then certainly we would want to look at that and reflect that back to them. I'm just more meaning if I have, like, there's something I see I don't understand, that sort of thing, I'd like to feed that to them so that they can go, oh, you know, it's okay, or we looked at that, or whatever. But to do, those are the kinds of questions you like beforehand, not after, is what I'm saying. So that's what I want to do. I just want to get, you know, in line enough that I'm not, like, like, you know, I think Saturday Night Live had that great skit where the person always had just the right thing to say, like, like, 10 minutes later. So that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, certainly, I'm here tonight, too. If there's any questions you have related to the engineering, as a professional engineer who worked on the project, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
My point is I don't have the question yet.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, though.
All right. Anything else before we open up the public hearing?
Well, I want to point out, I do have a couple of letters here. However, I think it probably makes more sense to wait on these till we get a full stack and maybe do them at the next meeting if we're not going to vote tonight. Some of these, I could summarize quickly, some of them are...
I think Katie summarized most of them.
Katie's already covered most.
And who else are we waiting for, do you know? Board of Health, it looks like?
I got a Board of Health, I have something from Bouset, Fire, you've already talked about.
You do have a Board of Health letter there, though?
All I, all it does is make reference to the fact that if you're not going to hook up the town sewer, you have to do Title V, but you're hooking up the town sewer.
Right.
So that's not relevant. And Water District gives thumbs up.
Right. So what letter are we waiting for, then? Just Housing Advisory?
I have nothing from Police.
Oh, no, Police was in there, wasn't it?
I think they said no comment.
And we need the clean DPW letter. I have. So why don't I cover this next meeting?
Fine.
If that makes sense to you guys.
And they're already linked in the agenda anyways.
Yeah, they're in the agenda.
Okay. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion. Motion, open the public hearing. Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak from the public on this project?
Hi, Doreen Dashler, 17th Sonnet Circle. I just have a couple of questions. One question is, if you zone this for these apartments, will this open it up for multifamily housing for the rest of Meeting House Road? Would all the rest of Meeting House Road be substituted, be apartments now?
This isn't the zoning change.
Oh, it's not a zoning change? Okay, so it would, so it wouldn't, okay. That's all I wanted to know, is if it would open up the rest of Meeting House Road. Thank you.
It could. It could.
How so?
Because, wouldn't you think it could? I mean, there's four other buildings that look exactly the same.
Yeah, but we're only dealing with one of them.
No, I understand that.
Zonies are already in place.
The zoning is already in place. No, I think your question was, can this, it can.
They can.
These other three other buildings eventually could go the same route.
Regardless, but that's...
They'd have to go through the same process.
But I was trying to answer a question.
And that's regardless of what we do to this one.
The zone's already in place.
The zone's already in place to be residential?
So if the owners of the other buildings want to do the same thing, they could.
Okay, so it's already residential?
They'd have to go through the same process.
It's got to have a special permit?
Yes.
Sorry, that's what I was trying to.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Can I do that?
You were answering the question, not necessarily the question itself.
Yes. Often the case. That's all the case, always. Anything else?
Anyone else?
Leaves public hearing open?
Leaves public hearing open? So.
Do you need a motion to continue?
You want to continue the 27th?
Yeah.
I move to continue the public hearing at the 27th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you want me to prepare a draft decision for the 27th, or wait until after the 27th?
I think, once we get a look at the DPW letter, I would be happy to have a draft to look at.
So, we're contemplating a potential draft decision for October 11th? Potentially closing on the 27th?
Correct. Okay. Onto Ten Hildreth.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you. Michael LaFavor requesting a six-slot definitive subdivision approval and applicable waivers under subdivision, sorry, control law and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Chelmsford and a special permit per article, per section Article 14 Aquifer Protection District. The project calls for the construction of a new dead-end roadway and the construction of six duplexes and six new lots. The site is located in the RC Residential Two Family Zoning District. The site is approximately 5.07 acres, as shown on Assessor's Parcel ID Map, 74 Block 324, Lots 10 and 12.
Thank you. Good evening.
Excuse me, before we start, I do have a procedural question for Evan. Normally, I thought we do a definitive subdivision separate from special permits. This is, I think, the first time I've seen them combined? Because it feels like different, there are different thresholds and different requirements.
Your decisions are going to be separate.
Okay.
But the legal ad and the hearings can be combined.
Okay.
But you will be issuing two separate votes and two distinct decisions.
Okay. Thanks.
I mean, if, if the, if the subsequent special permit requires the preceding definitive subdivision, would it not make sense to tackle the one first and then the other, or?
I think what makes sense is for Brian to do the project overview.
Okay.
And then wrap in the Aquifer as part of that presentation.
Yep, certainly.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So, for the record, Brian Gudrow with Hancock Associates on behalf of Michael LaFavor with Property Possible. So, we're here before you this evening for Ten Hildreth. Currently, the property is a single-family home. It's, it's two parcels that are in common ownership, so it's all referenced as Ten Hildreth. There's about five acres out here. The single-family house sits up on Hildreth Street. It's currently serviced by Municipal Water, Sewer, and Electric. And what is proposed before you is a six-lot subdivision. So, we have a private roadway, and then six lots for duplexes on each lot within the RC zone. There are a number of different resources out here. So, the planning board is, is one of many permitting stops that we'll be making within town. We were at Conservation last night. We opened the public hearing with notes of intent. There is Beaver Brook to the south and associated BVW. There is flood plain that's out there, and we also have a natural heritage piece. So, we're within the polygon of endangered and rare species. So, as a part of the Conservation, we've also filed with Natural Heritage. Board of Health has commented on the project. We're here before you with an Aquifer Protection District. We're also in the groundwater protection zone. So, currently, we're working with the Chelmsford Water Department to develop the environmental impact report. They have a very specific standard operating procedure. We're one of the first projects to run through it. So, we're installing monitoring wells right now to evaluate any potential impacts of the project to Chelmsford Water Department. So, back to, oh, and I apologize. Within the flood plain, there's also a stop to the ZBA for work within the flood plain district. So, we're, we're hitting everybody on this. So, back to the project, the, the six lots are going to be, one will be sewed, and that is utilizing the existing connection for the existing single-family house. So, five lots will be on septic. We have conducted soil testing out there to determine groundwater elevations and texture. That was witnessed by the Board of Health consultant. And groundwater is relatively deep, it's six to 12 feet. So, that soil testing also supported our stormwater design. Generally speaking, out here, the land slopes from Hildreth Street down towards the Brook, Beaver Brook in the back, and we've designed the roadway to kind of mirror that existing contouring of the land. So, Hildreth Street, the two lots up by Hildreth Street are going to be up at that elevation, and then gently it slopes towards the back. Now, stormwater management has been designed with special attention to the groundwater resources that we just described. So, the roadway runoff will be collected by deep-sown-pudding catch basins. They will then go to a hydrodynamic separator for pretreatment, and then ultimately discharge into an infiltration basin that's been sized for recharge as well as phosphorus reduction. One, one thing that I would like to go over particularly are roadway construction waivers. So, we have six lots out here, and that would, the, the design standards are 10 lots for lane, and then I believe 25 for minor street. Now, we have six lots here, but, but the key word in the definitive, in the subdivision regulation is houses. So, we have six houses, but they're duplexes. So, do we really have 12, or do we have six? We've designed this generally to minor lane, and we've asked for a handful of waivers. And the waivers are also reflecting the fact that this is not intended to be a public road. This is going to be a private road, and there'll be an association out here maintaining both stormwater and the roadway. So, to, to run through waivers, just very quickly, pavement width is one. The standard is 26 feet. We're asking to be reduced down to 24. There's centerline radius minimums of 150 feet for minor and 100 for lane. We're at 125. We kind of fall right in the middle. The vertical tangent, so the grade of the street, there is a specific requirement for a slope going through a cul-de-sac section. We've actually asked for a waiver of full build-out to the cul-de-sac for a hammerhead turnaround, and the waiver is, combines those, those two pieces. So, there's a waiver for the slope through a cul-de-sac that we're not proposing, and a waiver for the cul-de-sac itself. Sidewalks, we are asking for a waiver on. We feel that the size of the subdivision doesn't warrant sidewalks, and there's none on Hildreth Street currently. There's an easement waiver regarding the width of the drain easement in the back. It's required to be 30. We're providing a 24. And then curbing. Sloped granite is required in all subdivisions, and as this is private, we are proposing Cape Cod. Just to touch on the lack of a cul-de-sac, so we have had conversations with the Fire Department and done a sweat path analysis, and their requirements for not building out, you know, a full circular turnaround is to make sure that the largest apparatus in town can negotiate a three-point turn within the right-of-way. We've, we've done the sweat path, and we've, we've submitted that to the Fire Department. We were also in receipt from a number of different departments commentary, namely, DPW had, did the, the review of stormwater on this, and we know we have some housekeeping. So, we understand that tonight is the first of, I'm sure, several meetings. So, we'll work, when we work to revise the plans to address the department comments, also any comments that we receive from the board and the public this evening, we'll be taking into consideration as well. I think that is a general overview of, of the projects, and I'm happy to answer questions and hear what the board and the public have to say.
Should we take it, take it around with quest, for questions? Want to start?
Curbing's an issue with me. I think it should be granite.
You think, I didn't catch you, you think what?
It, it, I'm not likely to waive the granite curbing on it right off the bat, first thing. Sidewalks. And the radius is an issue for me.
The radius?
The turnaround.
Okay, I get a quick clarification. So, on the sidewalks, you would be looking for sidewalks on both sides? Or a singular side, both-side force?
John?
On the plan that's, that's up there, there's like a traditional cul-de-sac, but I, I heard you say that you're looking for like a hammerhead, and with that, with the thing where it was shaded in green, it was a different design. If you could just elaborate on that?
Certainly. So, the, the circle that you see is the, the right-of-way. So, the right-of-way doesn't terminate in just a dead end. You still develop the full kind of circle geometry, but I'm, we're asking for a waiver for construction of a circle of pavement, if you will, in lieu, a hammerhead will be turned. That essentially provides the same thing. The main reason for that, less impervious and more of a neighborhood feel.
Thank you.
So, I think Paul already mentioned this, but I am certainly not in favor of waiving any of the seven requests here at this point. The width of the street, the sidewalks. Yeah, I mean, there are seven of them.
I have no questions at this time.
Can you elaborate about the waiver that you're seeking for the slope of the cul-de-sac? I didn't catch, I didn't catch that.
So, the, the construction kind of standards, they set minimum and maximum slopes. And the minimum and maximum slopes go through the cul-de-sac. Here, we don't have a cul-de-sac. So, we're meeting the correct design slopes for pavement, but as soon as you come off of pavement, you're then into kind of a landscape space. The road's going to be at a higher elevation than where topographically the land is at the end, so it exceeds that. It's a catch-all waiver. It, it, it's not meeting the letter, but we're meeting the intent of the roadway slope.
That's all.
Let's see. I could, I could see some of these waivers, but I'm beginning to come over to Paul's point of view on, on the curbing. I mean, just had Bitcong berm put in front of my house up on High Street, and I don't think it lasted half a day before there was a gouge out of it the size of a football. So, I, I would be disinclined to go with Bitcong unless somebody can specifically describe to me why that is as good as granite, cost not being a factor. I'd be inclined also to have something of a sidewalk in there. Wouldn't necessarily need to be on both sides, but something like a sidewalk makes sense. In terms of the, of the, the hammerhead and the width of the pavement and things like that, I'm not particularly concerned, something this small. That's my summary of thoughts right now.
I've got, I've got a few questions. The, your narrative talks about how the utility easement won't be disturbed, but in the plans, that's being used as compensatory flood storage.
That's correct. So, if we had stated that, that would have been an error, because we are regrading part of the national grid easement to create the flood plain compensatory storage.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. The rock wall that's up in the upper part of the property?
Mm-hmm.
Has that been in front of the Historic Commission? Has that been designated historic at all?
It has not been before the Historic Commission, and we'll certainly look into it to see if it is historic. I know that this section of Hildreth, I don't believe is designated scenic road.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I didn't hear what you said.
So, this has not been before historic, and I don't believe that it is, but we can certainly check for it.
Got it.
I do, I do, did hear from the Historical Commission on this, and I was given a deed that cites the property from 1924, that cites the property line, and it makes reference to a rock wall. And so, I think it's definitely worth getting confirmed from them, because I think it's very likely it is historic.
I, I could offer clarity just on the deed. That's, that's the division line between the two parcels? So, with Ten Hildreth being made up with both, the rock wall is the division from the smaller lot and the larger lot?
Correct, correct. But it's a, but it's an existing historic rock wall. That's the point. At least, at least what I'm saying is that I think, I think we want to have that confirmed.
Mm-hmm.
So, just emphasizing what Chris asked for.
Let's see what else. The, what I've noticed, and what's also been pointed out, is that the applicant on this project is not the owner registered in the deed. Can we get clarification on that?
So, the applicant is not the owner. Property possible is the applicant.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the deed, the deed makes reference to a Garrett Oberhauser.
Correct.
So, but the application doesn't mention a Garrett Oberhauser, Oberhauser. So, what is the legal document that tells us that the applicant is the legal owner? I don't think we have that.
The applicant is not the legal owner. The applicant is under an agreement to purchase the property.
Right, that, so, so the current applicant is not the owner, because I believe the application has the owner also identified as, as the property's possible, if I recall correctly.
So, we'll, we'll work with Evan to clarify that.
So, it's under agreement, is what you're saying?
It is under agreement, correct.
Okay. Did, can you say whether he did any sort of due diligence environmental testing of the lot?
I do not believe so.
If you could confirm that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Specifically on those waivers, I would also be uninclined to grant most of them, primarily because of the sensitivity of this area. I think granite curbing is an absolute must in this area to help control stormwater. Otherwise, it will go anywhere, and the stormwater mitigation will be nullified. And in terms of the subdivision in general, I'm having a hard time rectifying this subdivision with some of the requirements that we have to approve a subdivision. And I can get into it now or later. It's up to you, but.
I would say no.
So, one of the, one of the areas is that its complete and technical adequacy of all submissions, and we've already shown a couple of things that are missing. Hopefully, we'll get that. The location does not entail unwarranted hazard to safety, health, convenience of future residents, the development or others because of possible natural disasters, traffic hazard, or other environmental degradation. The current number of. The current number of homes on this area is 14. And if we approve this subdivision, it essentially doubles the amount of residences on the street. A number of residents have pointed it out, but I've also done a, a site walk over there. And the entrance to Hildreth is extremely narrow. And adding this volume of traffic on that street is going to be a nightmare. I cannot envision that increase in traffic in that area. We're also looking at a very environmentally sensitive area. And so packing all of these lots into one area to me is a problem. Just as an example, you've got three buildings that are completely in the Natural Resource Protection Area. Two are partially and one is outside. One building is within, is completely within the 100-foot buffer. Um, one building is partially within it. Two lawns are within the 100-foot buffer. One is partially in the 50-foot buffer. One leaching field is within the 100-foot buffer completely and one infiltration is within the 100-foot buffer. So to me, the fact that this is a, um, such a protected area is a little bit of a concern. So before we even get to the special permit, I have concerns about approving the subdivision in general in this location.
So just to build on that, um. It's all good points. And, uh, my recommendation to the board is that we engage with council. Reason for that is that, uh, the legal framework related to definitive subdivision and the case law, um, seems to severely limit the board's authority. My concern is that the regulations were adopted in 1977. Uh, and they don't appear to be consistent with the current case law. While the board has, while the board has approved definitive subdivisions over the years. This one, this particular subdivision is of a, such a, a different sensitivity than the others. So to Chris's point, I think before we engage in lengthy conversations, ask for peer reviews and go down, go down that particular path. I think we're, I think the process is best served to get council's initial feedback on this. But just to clarify the, the legal jurisdiction under definitive subdivision.
And I also want to mention that, um, I was at the Conservation Commission meeting last night and a couple of things came up. One is that the national grid easement, um, is, is needed in order for that compensatory storage. The town has already, um, been through that process, I believe they mentioned, and it could take over a year before that can be approved. So my concern is that if we go down and approve something and that doesn't get approved, they're going to have to completely redesign, um, some of these plans. The wildlife assessment also needs to be done.
You're, you're referring to the commission?
The commission. So there, to me, there are a lot of dependencies that I wouldn't want to necessarily approve things too quickly without a lot of those other pieces in place. Because those could impact significant design changes. And the last thing that was brought up, and I want to make sure that we do put into our, um, our process, is that there was brought up, um, a potential auto repair shop. An illegal auto repair shop, um, was observed by neighbors on that site. And so one of the things, um, I would recommend is that we ask the building inspector to take a look at the, the structure that's there, um, because that might have also been illegally raised. So if, if the building inspector could take a look at that structure and see if that is in violation. And then if there's any indication of hazardous material on site. Because those are other potential hurdles that we may need to deal with before approving something.
Yep. And I just, I'm gonna agree with everything that Chris said. I just wanted to add a little bit more. I, if, given, given how many, like, I agree with Chris that basically what they want to add is essentially doubling the number of households on, on Hildreth. Even if you did, even if you halved the project to three duplexes, that would still be increasing it by 40% or so, which is quite, quite significant. It's a narrow street. There are no sidewalks. Kids walk on the street. I think, I think that is a, a very... I, I think that's a very obvious case that, 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 that there would be a traffic hazard. So I'm, I'm in a complete agreement. I'm also in complete agreement with Chris that I think that we really want to make that decision first. In terms of what is the maximum that we would be willing to entertain, uh, with, 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 with input from town council? Just so that the applicant can be guided. I, I just would hate to see this process go on for several meetings and then decide that. I think the sooner we decide that, the better. Uh, the other thing also is that we, um, for larger projects, but I think in the cases of where it, we, uh, where the board can find that essentially we think that there's uniqueness about the site, and I think the fact that most of the site is priority habitat. It's sufficient for that, that we can ask for an environmental information report under the subdivision regulations. I think that would be a good thing to ask for. The reason I, I, I think so is because you have natural heritage that's going to be weighing in on this. You have Conservation Commission's wildlife habitat, and I would like it sort of summarized for us so that we can assess, in terms of not only we assessing traffic hazard, but also impact degradation to the environment, which is one of the other things that we're supposed to look at under the subdivision regulations. So.
Did you, what did you say? An environmental impact?
Infor-
Information?
Environmental information report, yeah.
And that's different than environmental impact report?
It's one of the items that I think we need, um, input from council on.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's from our subdivision. It's, uh, under, um, I think it's under Article II, Plan Procedures, Section 202-10. "Action by Planning Board: A Decision Determination Based Upon the Environmental Information Report Where Submitted" "That the subdivision, subdivision as designated will not cause substantial and irreversible damage to the environment." "Which damage could be avoided or ameliorated through an alternative development plan." So that, that, that's guidance that we have, uh, under our, under our regulations. And then we can find that, that we should have that, uh, under our variation of requirements. Where we may, in any particular case, uh, where such action is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intended purposes of the subdivision control law, to require information and impose requirements and conditions in addition to, and vary the procedures set forth in these rules and regulations. And I think that's where.
Okay, so let's get feedback from John.
I, I was amazed to read, read in detail the regulations and then compare it to the.
And the case, case law has drifted in this area in just 20 years.
There is, there is some, um, areas of the Massachusetts law as well that applies to this.
Well, the, the, uh, section, uh, chapter 41.
81M.
Yeah, is the enabling statute. And that, that appears to be what the courts have gone back to, to provide, um, the box, the regulatory framework. The regulations seem to go far beyond.
Right, but Evan, even that says the power of a planning board or, and of the Board of Appeal under the subdivision control law shall be exercised with due regard for the provision of adequate access to all the lots in the subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel.
Understood, understood. There's lots of case law and adequacy of access and.
For lessening congestion in such ways in the adjacent public ways.
Most of the subdivisions that have been improved in recent history haven't had a narrow road, environmental. The regulations speak to all of these concerns that I think the board wants to look at as a primary concern before we go, go down deep dive peer reviews on. Let's get, let's get council in here, engage with the board, clarify what the bounds are based upon current case law.
And I had a bunch of other detailed questions, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to give those tonight. I, I would say that though in parallel, there are a couple of questions that we should be able to continue to answer, and that is the, the question regarding the ownership. The relationship of the owner and the applicant, and also the, um, the stone wall going to the Historical Commission. I think those can proceed. Regardless, those are going to be questions that should be answered regardless of, of, of what happens and the decision about the sizing of it and stuff like that.
Okay.
I imagine continuing at this point.
There are a lot of people here. Do we want to open to public?
We can open, I think, open and continue. Um, we can, we can hear stuff, but at, at this point, we have so little information about what the bounds are of our decision-making ability. And I think, I think Evan, Evan is right. Case law and the regulations are not entirely in sync here. And, uh, it probably behooves us to figure out what we can and cannot do before we try to take a lot of information. And I, I think we've all received the information. There've been plenty of letters. I think, I think we have a pretty good idea of what the concern set is. But I'd like to be efficient here if we can. Does that make sense to you?
Is, was this with regards to the question of whether we open it for public input?
Well, I, we, we can open and immediately continue. We, we can hear, we can hear public input now, but.
I would like to hear it now.
But.
We have people here.
We have people here. I'd like to hear it.
They waited a long time, right?
I'll make a motion to open to public hearing.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye, do it.
Okay, I'm going to say at the outset that I would like, if possible, for people to be, um, brief to the point, not speak over three minutes if, if at all possible. And, um, I think we'll only do this for a maximum of 20 or 25 minutes.
Fair enough.
There, there'll be other opportunities.
Yeah, there will be.
And please try not to repeat things that people in front of you in line have already addressed. Thank you.
Can I, can I just add? And if you want to say, like, if you agree with someone, what someone else has already said, if you just want to get up and say, this is my person, I live at this address, and I agree with everything that's been said, that goes, that's okay too.
Great. I'm Linda Carney. I own the properties at 17 Hildreth Street and 19 Plum diagonally across from the said property in question. And I also am here tonight not only to personally explain my views, but also representing the community. We had a community input meeting, a neighborhood meeting, and there were 17 people that showed up that have concerns about this. So briefly, we've identified two areas of concern: protection of the aquifer and the environment, and the density of the parcels. And I know a lot of my questions and a lot of my concerns have already been addressed here, but I've got it down to three minutes. So if you don't mind, I'll just zip through my points. Protection of the aquifer and wetlands. 100% of the property sits on the aquifer. 50% is known as the high aquifer, wetlands, buffer zone, or actual wetlands. Gerrymandering the lot lines places three duplexes within the 100-foot, and then the 50-foot is, was already explained. The proposal to move part of the wetlands underneath national grids is extremely problematic for all, especially with our endangered species and the fact that water doesn't go back uphill after it's already come down. Six duplex foundations, five double septic tanks, pavements of a new road, and six driveways will certainly disrupt the natural flow and cleansing of the water, leading to increased flooding of this neighborhood, already a problem. The density of the project. Double's number of residents already sets, but this has not been set since 2015. There have been 19 new dwellings with 250 feet of this proposed piece of property development.
What was that fact again? What was that?
Since 2015, there have been 19 new dwellings built within 250 feet of this proposed project. Making 31 in a small, well-developed area with an insufficient infrastructure.
Was there someone who provided a map? This is, uh, right.
Yes, we do have it mapped.
Yeah, I think you, I think you sent one, right?
Yes, we did.
What was that? Okay, yeah, because I do remember seeing the map.
Yep, we did send a map with that. And Hildreth Street, we've measured, is between 16 and 18 feet at its widest. Not allowing for two-way traffic now. Proposed street is 25 feet unless they get their waiver. Increased traffic will add to the difficulty entering and exiting Hildreth Street, Perham Street, the center school, as well as the intersection of Billerica Road and Golden Cove intersections. If you doubt me, come on out between 7:00 and 8:00 a.m. Further erodes the safety of the neighborhood children walking to and from school. We did have bus service for a while, but they ended the bus service and they require our neighborhood to become walkers. We do not have sidewalks. It took us six years to get a crosswalk and a blinky light at the center school. It also limits the access to the middle and high school bus stops, which is right at the corner of my street and at the top of Hildreth. Loss of privacy and the degrading of the quality of life for everyone is key number one and can't be overlooked in this case. And I respectfully submit my list tonight to be part of the permanent record or the actual record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm up next. Um, I'm Marcy Comtoys. I live at 24 Hildreth Street, so I am at the dead end part of Hildreth Street. And I am here to submit to you tonight a petition signed by at least 72 members of the neighborhood. More are reaching out to me daily saying, can we get our name on this? Unfortunately, um, I have to present it tonight, but I will gladly go out and canvass those neighbors and get their signatures as well. So just really quickly, as, um, to the members of the planning board, um, we respectfully request that you, um, do not approve this project of the six subdivision lots with the six duplexes on it for the following reasons. The construction of the property, properties will forever change the topography of the land. The removal of the mature trees will change the water flow on and off the properties affecting all of the nearby properties. To include increasing in the area that will flood due to no other space for the water to go except for down, out, and up. Changes to the protected wetland areas will also change the wattle table lines. The proposed movement of the wetlands on the property of 10 Hildreth Street will cause for the rest of the wetlands to absorb more water, creating flooding in the neighborhood. We are already receiving and a lot of additional flooding in our neighborhood due to trees that have already been removed on the property. So it does not absorb the way it used to. We have water where we've never had water in the summer before, and it is not due to the rain. It started in the spring before the rain started. The movement of the buildings on the wetlands will impact the animals that use this area for their habitat, including two endangered species that have been identified at this time. The addition of five septic systems and the infiltration basin near the wetland and the potential that it will cause in the area, including to a level-two aqua- for for the town's water. Septic systems fail. Septic systems leak. What happens when it does and it gets into the aquifers, into the wetlands, and destroys habitats and drinking water for the town? In addition to the six duplexes units that will nearly double Hildreth Street, it will also double the amount of traffic entering and exiting the street. The street currently has between 16 and 18 feet wide. At its widest point is the dead-end street at my house. At the top of the street where you enter, it is 16 feet. You cannot get two cars to enter and exit the street at the same time. When it snows, it's less. We're going to be adding now potentially 24 more vehicles traveling Hildreth Street. This is going to create a problem in our neighborhood. And due to the increase of traffic and the narrowness in the road, our children who have to walk to school, because we do not have busing, are now going to be creating a, will have to endanger the hazard of cars coming in and out, more cars coming in and out. As it was said, my children had to walk to the Center Elementary School, and there was never a stop sign up there. There was never a crosswalk up there. My youngest is now in high school, is now driving, and we finally got a crosswalk. He had to cross the street at 6:30 in the morning to catch his bus. Imagine him having to do that now with 24 additional cars leaving to go to work at that time. There are no streetlights on Hildreth Street. This is a danger to our children. So I respectfully submit that there are 71, between 71 and 72 signatures on this petition of neighbors who are in disagreement with this plan and would like you to vote no to putting six duplexes in. Also, I don't want to spend much more time, but I will submit to you the letter that I have sent to most of you, uh, to have on record. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Wood. I live at 16 Hildreth Street. I'm the closest house, um, I guess to the bottom of this map. I'm, I'm really the low point on Hildreth Street there, and, um... And, um, I have a quick letter I want to read and turn in also some pictures. The property is low, low point of Hildreth Street. I look up from my backyard, I look uphill. It doesn't, I know it goes to Billerica Brook, but to the, directly to my right, it's above me. Um, you know, moved in 30 years ago, you see the, the, the wetlands, which they didn't really focus on the wetland issue, um, on that map and the boundaries. There's quite a bit of water in there. I have pictures of that. I was going to turn it in to the board. That water would fill, you know, fall, winter, spring, and gone, you know, summer rain would come and go. Now, what I see now is standing water all the time. And I think, um, a big reason for this water problem is the land next door. When I moved in 30 years ago, Mr. Kelly, if anybody's aware, Mr. Kelly, who owned the property, senior, and, um, it was a haven of, you know, of trees and conservation and, you know, the neighborhood used it, and he'd let, will, he loved it back there. And last, she changed ownership since he passed away, and it's been used very differently, uh, which is a big concern of the whole neighborhood. Like I said, it was, you know, always doing car work out front, things like that. But the other issue is I had, um, I've seen bucket trucks for cutting trees, bulldozers, excavator, plows, uh, tractors, digging and, and moving the land around. And I, like I said, I think a concern I brought up with the Conservation Commission last night because there's an area, there was a small barn out back. I know he raised that. He used that, that, I don't go into the property because I don't dare. He could, he smashed that down, he built a new one. I'm sure there's no permits on record for that. Um, like I said, with all the, he, he made a racetrack out there for snowmobiles, four-wheelers, and, um, dirt bikes used to tear, you know, way down to the wetlands, along the wetlands, along the, the, um, flood plain. And now, like I said, I think that's a direct result of why I'm having more water behind my house. Like I said, I have these, I'm going to submit all different seasons. And we have so much standing water back there, I have a concern, I'm seeing dying trees there just from the water already. So that's, you know, sort of a synopsis of my letter. I don't want to repeat a lot of things, but my biggest worry is, at the Conservation Commission last night, as I oversee in other neighborhoods with water problems, I don't want to have a water problem more than I have. You get an opportunity if somebody's going to speak on some of the issues somebody had in this neighborhood recently. But like I said, when I look up to Hildreth, 10 Hildreth Street, it's uphill. And if you're going to, you're going to be in, you're going to take away that 50 to 100-foot barrier there of protection. Now, the 50 to, 0 to 50 is going to be your, your wetland protection, it's going to erode. I don't care what waters, they can make, I'm going to put a trench here, and it's coming downhill to me. It's going to fill that wetlands more than ever, causing impossible flooding. My yard, my houses, my neighbors, you know, Lee CK, they're all right next to us, that all wraps around there. There's quite a bit of water down there. I think there needs, you know, I know they're looking at that. And then, um, you know, the water table's high always. Is it even higher? Are my foundations and footings and, going to be put in water 24/7? I'm going to have structural problems someday, five, 10 years down the road? I don't know. Um, I don't want to run on, I know some people have to talk, but I'd just like to submit my letter and some pictures too, please.
Thank you.
Can you send the pictures down? Can I send the pictures down real quick?
Nate Montero, I live at number four.
Pictures.
Number four, Hildreth. It's, uh, the first house right at the top. So I'm going to reiterate what Paul said about a real-world situation. I've lived there since 21, April of 21, and we moved in. I got three kids, and it was a quiet street. It's 13 feet, nine inches. That's how wide the street is. I'm concerned about my kids, however, I have a real-life water issue. 97 Billerica Road, 95, 97 Billerica Road, that was demolished three months after we moved in. We couldn't see that house, vegetation, trees, land, uh, grass, overgrown. Developer came in, two-story developed complex, like the six that are going to come in. For two years, my yard has flooded. Two years. I've spent thousands. That's what's going to happen. You want to say otherwise? I got photos. It's going to flood. The lowest point, water finds its path of least resistance. So you want to come out to my house after a rainstorm? I've spent thousands of dollars trying to fix this issue. It's not, it's not going to fix it, but it's going to prevent other people's water coming on my property. And that's what's going to burden number 16 and number six. I can tell you that. So Paul sent photos of my house.
You did?
Yo, you have.
Yes.
There was 10 inches of water in my yard on January 23rd. I was out there in the rain, watching the water come from 95 Billerica Road. I mean, this was, this was it when it was overgrown. This was my yard on July 23rd. I was out there in the rain, and I watched the water come down. That's what's going to happen. It's 10 grand. It's a mound to prevent water from flooding my yard with my kids, mosquitoes. I don't deserve that. They don't deserve that. I want to get these pictures in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, we are Bruce and Amory McMaster, and we live at 6 Hildreth Street. We are the butters of 10 to 12. Three of the very large, they are large duplexes are proposed, is, that are proposed, will run the entire length of our property. These duplexes will have a clear view of our backyard and pool area, as well as being able to look directly into our dining room and living room. They appear to be close to our property line. The distance between my garage and in-law and the property line is 12 feet. There will be nothing between these houses and my yard. The same type of duplexes were also built just beyond the power lines at the back of our property on Bernard Way. We are able to see the lights in these houses and what they're doing in their yards when the leaves fall, in the fall until spring. My husband has lived in this suburban house for 66 years. He has seen many changes to our street, but none have changed the character of the neighborhood. This will. We live on a very narrow street. Two cars cannot pass without going on people's lawns. This project will add at least 24 more cars to this small street. My house that was a suburban house will now feel like a city house. We will probably lose the tenant in our in-law because she will only see the back of these buildings. The duplexes will probably block most of the light coming in. As well as the butters being able to see directly into my tenant's living room, the curtains will need to be closed at all times. We have enough issues with water in my garage and breezeway now. What will happen when the land is changed? We're sure that most of the trees will be taken down. If any of this project is approved, which we hope not, at least they could do is build a living barrier between us and them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Morassi. I live on Plum Street, about 200 feet away from this proposed property. First of all, I'd like to thank you all. I can tell clearly that you've read the letters that we sent in. You mentioned many of the things that I was planning to discuss, so I will bypass those in respect of your time. My biggest concern is definitely the safety for the children, which you mentioned. I have four children who are school age myself. Two of them are at Center Elementary School right now, so they're walking down that street every day.
Oh.
Bussing obviously is not an option. Some people might wonder if driving is an option. Well, just like we have a street that can't support this, Hildreth Street, we also have schools that can't support this. The parking at the school is completely insufficient. They added 18 parking spots in 2019. They added pods to the back of the school in 2016. There's absolutely no parking. If you go there at 3:15, you'll see this mess. And you have a mess all over Billerica Road with the cars backed up. Same thing happens in the morning. So what are we told to do? Well, we were told to park behind the town offices as an option, so we walked behind all the houses here on Billerica Road and parked behind the town offices. Then we were told, no, you can't park behind the town offices either. You have to park near the baseball fields on Chelmsford Street. Well, I have a map here I could show you. That's further away from the school than my house is. So that's not very helpful. All right? And this is a growing problem. So I mentioned 2016 and 2019 because as we've been discussing, really, these additions have been going in, in the last eight years or so. So there have already been drastic changes. And this is just one more. And I know that we need to think of everything as an individual case, but really, this isn't. There are a few developers that come in and do, and build these. And then, originally, I was describing it as a build-and-leave model, because out of the 19 new additions, only one, one unit is by somebody who lives in our neighborhood. Everything else is by someone who comes in, and I would say leave, but really, it's a build and then go next door and build model. That's what they're doing. One at a time, or most recently, 10 at a time now, 12 at a time. So it's just really piling up on the problem. So everything that we're mentioning, safety, it's a, it's a building issue. Now, one thing that we haven't talked about a lot is the community character. One thing that drew me to this neighborhood is when you come in, nice, quiet streets, but also every house is unique. It was built up over a 100-year period. And, um, it's, it's not like that anymore. I can show you nine of the recent houses that will go in, that have gone in, and they look very nice. When the first one went in, it was right across the street from me. Duplex looks great. Nobody complained. We love it, right? Well, the next three looked identical, except they put brown garage doors on one. Then the five units that went in next, they all look identical to each other. So we went from having a neighborhood with all these unique houses, and now we have, oh, 18, 18 units, two styles. Now we're going to have another 12 units. I don't know, it'll probably be one of those two styles, maybe a third one. So it just doesn't have that nice neighborhood feel that it had before. It looks more like a condo complex, which is fine, but that's not what this neighborhood was. And that's not what drew a lot of people to it. So I appreciate my neighbors talking about the water issues, and, um, that is a huge issue, but the education system, the infrastructure, the road, the safety, uh, these are really big items for me and my family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Chevelli, 11 Hildreth Street. My neighbors pretty much brought up everything we've talked about and I have concerns with. My biggest concern is I'm at 11. As you can see where the pointer is, that's 11 Hildreth Street. So that opening of that road, all those lights in the evening, going to come directly into my living room. There's going to be no more sitting on my farmer's porch in the evening, listening to birds, crickets, tree frogs, or anything, because I won't be able to enjoy that anymore. We bought this house several years ago. We've lived in Chelmsford pretty much all of our life. We bought this house, it's a two-family. My mother-in-law lives on the other side. I planned on retiring there and just living the rest of my life there. But if this development goes in, basically, my quality of life is going to go down, because I'm not going to be able to enjoy my front yard, my living room, my front porch, anything, because of all the traffic coming in and out. So I really would like to have this development not go in. Thank you.
Good evening. Aaron Cunningham, 67 Billerica, so it's the White House on the corner of Perham. Because I work at home, I have the pleasure of watching the traffic. I'm uphill, so I don't have as many water problems. But traffic's just like water. It'll find path of least resistance. It's already, I already have to watch the kids going down the street to go play down the street, because we're cut through now. So you add 24 or possibly more cars, they're not going to go up, not all of them are going to go up Hildreth, that's because it's going to be too narrow. So they're going to use the cut through. So when the fire department's pulling out and it's a red light, everybody takes a left to go around and get on Summer Street. When it's backed up in the morning, because of the Golden Cove and the light in the school, they come down and they do a cut around, because you know what? They might save five cars. I've only been in that house, 217-year-old house, and I've only been there for five years, and the neighborhood has already changed with the amount of development and people moving into town. And that's great. That's great for everybody that owns property. But is it really worth adding 12 more units to a neighborhood that already started to go beyond capacity? Because every time I turn around, somebody's buying up a small lot and putting in more housing. The water is a safety issue, the traffic is a safety issue, and I don't want to get in the way of people making money, that's what we're all about here, but at some point it's got to stop. And you, you, right now, we're a path, and our neighbors working together with you is the path to maybe, maybe not this one in this neighborhood. If it, if it was another duplex, I probably wouldn't necessarily notice, but 12 homes is a lot. So I appreciate it, and I do support everything everybody else says, because I walk that neighborhood and I know exactly what they're talking about. So thank you very much.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Bob Garth, here in, I live at 22 Hildreth Street. I'm not going to go over what everybody else has said. My question is, and I would really like an answer to this. Because of the mechanic operation at 10 Hildreth Street, I would be willing to bet that there was hazardous waste in the, in the property. We know there were a couple of cars sitting there, snowmobile, a boat, I think a small farm tractor. And with all the repairs that they used to do, it must be hazardous waste someplace on the, on the property. Although, although maybe they're very good at cleaning it all up. What will you require to make sure that that isn't a problem, that dirt is not just turned over on top of the aquifer? What can you do? What kind of report can you get to assure us as a neighborhood that that has been taken care of? That's a question. Can I get an answer on that?
No, this is, we don't respond to questions in public input.
Another meeting.
All right. I'll be back.
But we've taken note of the question.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was just going to comment that after, afterward, which I would have responded, but, um, that is, that is something that I, I wanted to look into, because obviously environmental is, is a part of the subdivision. And, and because I was wanting to, to just get in touch with the Board of Health as to what they were going to do anyway, uh, that was one thing I was going to ask is, is to follow up with the Board of Health.
Okay, let's continue with the public input.
Oh, thank you. My name is Jeff Carney. I live at number 17 Hildreth Street. And I wanted to make one thing clear, that the Historical Commission did look into this. This was number three on their agenda at their meeting last night, so they are looking into it. Also, Justin Johnson couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to read what he was going to say. He's at number 26 Hildreth Street. He's lived there for over 30 years. And his, one of his concerns is the snow removal. If you're building a road, you're going to have to remove the snow. Where is it going to be placed? It can't be placed on Hildreth Street, that's way too narrow, and that means it would have to be dumped somewhere on the property. That would mean snow would be melting and running off into the aquifer that this property sits on. And as we all know, snow has chemicals in it because we treat our streets. That brings up the question of all these lawns from all these houses that we're going to build, the residents there would probably use chemicals, herbicides and insecticides upon their lawns. This is land that is very sandy, and these chemicals will leach right into our aquifer that feeds our drinking wells. Chelmsford's already had an issue with this in the past, I guess. Also, the area of Beaver, Beaver Brook down by Turnpike Road, it's already prone to heavy The proposed reductions on wetlands would be guaranteed to increase that flooding around the homes and probably around the power lines. Mr. Johnson said previously that he had taken a canoe up around where one of these houses is supposed to be built. I'm wondering if they're, the house is going to come equipped with a boat, so the residents aren't stranded there. I would also have you bear in mind that none I would also have you bear in mind that none of these homes is going to be affordable housing, that's for sure, since they'll probably sell for a million dollars apiece. And they won't be handicapped accessible, I'm sure. We have an awful lot of issues from this. I think we've brought up most of them tonight, but there will be more coming up since this property needs to be really closely looked at. I've noticed that an awful lot of the old hardwood trees that were supposed to be protected have been taken down, and I'm wondering if they're going to be replaced by whoever develops this property. Thank you. And I would like to include some of this in the permanent record.
Mr. Johnson is on Zoom. He has his hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. First of all, I want to say that I apologize. I am not able to be there in person tonight. I had to work late. I agree with 100% of what everyone has said about this property with all the concerns. And one thing I wanted to, I did want to elaborate on is that this past year, we did receive letters in the mail from the Water Department saying that our water had issues, our drinking water. This is water that the entire town uses. And it sounds like, based on what the information we've got so far, is that this aquifer that's underneath this property is the one that predominantly produces most of the drinking water and the usable water for the town. My thinking is, is it worth jeopardizing that for six duplexes? Like, an entire town's worth of people for six duplexes? Somebody had mentioned it before. You, you can put in all the systems you want over there. There's no way to absolutely guarantee without the shadow of a doubt that they won't fail. It might not be today. It might not be tomorrow. It could be a few years from now. Something will happen. I think that's a hell of a risk take just for a few houses for everybody that lives here. The other concern I have is if something does go wrong, these houses are so tightly compact in each other in an area that is very well protected, that is very dense and has a lot of water in it. How are you going to get any type of machinery in there to then fix these problems without having to then go further into the wetlands and then, and uproot other people's yards that would hypothetically be there? This project does not make sense. It's, I'll leave it at that. I appreciate your time. Thank you. I know it's late for everybody, but that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you coming back for seconds?
I'm ready. I see two seconds. Sorry for getting up here twice. I've got to submit my letter for official use. And I think it's important. It includes a couple of emails from the principal, reaching out to the parents about parking issues. Two of the many emails also includes that map showing what's gone on in our neighborhood over the last seven or eight years. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'll do is tomorrow, I'll PDF all these letters out to everybody. Can I just get the others that came around?
Okay.
I just also wanted to mention, since I did go out there and do a site walk from the street on Saturday of last weekend, I would highly recommend going out there and taking a look at the site and how walking up and down the street, it's actually interesting viewing.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to do that individually or as a site walk?
I don't know. I didn't know if we wanted to do it as a group.
I can drive, I can drive.
Probably not going to be going on to the landing question anyways.
Yeah, you can't go on the property.
Right.
I drove down the street, but I do not go on the property.
I've walked it and driven it.
The delivered papers there.
I'll take a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue to the 27th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. And now we have.
Thank you.
Not quite lost. 99 Brick Hill Road.
Oh, my gosh, she was the first one here.
DND Homes requesting site plan approval for construction of a. Can you guys take the conversation outside, please, so we can continue with our meeting? Let's give him a few minutes to walk out. For the construction of a 49,910 square foot industrial warehouse. Excuse me. Can you take the conversation somewhere else, please? Thank you. For the construction of a 49,910 square foot industrial warehouse building with integrated surface parking, loading facilities and onsite infrastructure improvements. The site is located in IA. Zoning district is shown, and is shown on parcel ID map 88, block 271, lot 3, consisting of approximately 9.63 acres. The applicant requests special permit per Article 11, major business complex, Article 14, aquifer protection, Article 5, off-street parking and loading, and site plan review per Section 195-104, and any other permit relief as may be required.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Christine Hung from Reemer &amp; Bronstein, an attorney for the applicant. We have members of the development team here tonight. So with me, I have Ender Sarakay from the applicant, Brian Gudrow from, our site civil engineer from Hancock Associates, Kim Hazavardian, who is our traffic consultant from T E P, T E P P, and Michael Kern, our architect from Linear Development. I know it's very late, and we'll try to be as concise as possible. Evan, can you bring up? Oh, thank you. We have a quick agenda. We'll try to go through it as quickly as possible. We'll talk about the existing conditions, site conditions, our proposed project, talk about traffic as well as the architectural renderings, and then open it up for any questions that the board may have. So the next slide. So this is a Google Maps aerial view of the property. As you can see, it is a undeveloped parcel of land by the UPS site. I know that this kind of area was talked about earlier tonight. Evan, if you could go to the next slide. It is a nine-and-a-half acre site that's located on 93 Brick Hill Road, but its frontage is on the UPS Road and as is the lot access. As the chair said, it is in the IA zoning district as well as a COID in the floodplain and aquifer overlay district. This proposed project is, the applicant is seeking to develop a warehouse building of approximately 98,000 square feet and to be built in phases. So Phase 1 will be the construction of the warehouse building as well as the parking on the left and right side of the buildings. Phase 2, and then the accompanying infrastructure, stormwater management improvements. Phase 2 will be the rear parking area. So one of the special permits that we're requesting is for land bank parking spaces. So that would be Phase 2, which is the rear of the parking site, which will then connect in a loop driveway, all of the parking for the site circulation. The proposal right now is that that rear parking won't be needed based upon the operations. And so that that will remain basically like pervious and just undeveloped and not paved at all. The property is located within jurisdictional wetlands, and we filed an NOI and will be before the Concom. So we'll be getting permitting from that, from that board. And then we, yesterday, we received department comments. We haven't had a chance yet to digest it, but we will. And we'll be back with comprehensive answers to, to questions that were raised in the various department comments. So right now, I will turn it over to Brian Gudrow, who will walk you through the proposed site development.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Brian Gudrow with Hancock Associates. So Christine did a great job introducing the project. I'm going to stick to the technical aspects of the development. So primarily sewer, topography and stormwater. So the site is currently undeveloped. It sits on a bit of a hill. There's about 30 feet of elevation change from the top of the hill to the north, or excuse me, the southwest and east portions. The page is oriented south is actually the top of the page. North is generally where UPS Road is. So from the center of the site down to where the wetlands are, 30 feet of elevation change. So what we did when we came up with this plan of development, we looked at the elevation of UPS Road. We looked at the footprint of the building, and then we looked at the topography so that we could figure out a way that we could work within the confines of the material that was already out there. So we're, we developed a net, a net balanced site, meaning that our cuts within the hill equal our fills. So we set the, set the building at an elevation where we could balance the site. And then also, we had to look at access. So we have two different driveways, and UPS Road kind of goes up and down. The crest of the hill is more to the western side or the right-hand side of the page, and then it slopes down towards Brick Hill Road. So the eastern portion where the main entrances in our ADA units, we were able to have compliant slopes to get up into the site. Fire department requires very specific things for, for access. On the western, or excuse me, the eastern or the left, left-hand side of the page, we did have a little bit of a steeper slope, but we, we, the architect was able to configure the loading docks such that we had a longer distance to be able to get into the site and then provide the maneuver area that's required for the larger trucks. As Christine had mentioned, there's a two-phase project. So the initial phase is what you're seeing. No, that's the full build-out phase. So the full build-out phase actually loops the driveway around the back of the building with the required 90, excuse me, 98 spaces? 96 spaces? And what our proposal is for the initial build-out is 51 spaces. And the reason why we did that is that's what the expected demand is going to be for the tenant space. So the connecting portion in the back, we land banked. And what we're doing in that area is we're just, we're providing open space for the time being and drainage for part of the roof area. So drainage for this site is kind of scattered throughout the areas that we're proposing to develop. So first thing we did was we went out there and we conducted soil testing so we can understand groundwater texture and soil. Groundwater is fairly deep, given the fact that it's a hill, and we know that the groundwater is present because of the wetlands that are out there. And it's a very sandy material. So we were able to develop five specific stormwater management facilities kind of around the site. And that does two things. That treats all the parking area. So we're capturing, treating, and then recharging the pavement that's being proposed. And we're also providing recharge for the roof. Now, in that phasing development, the rear portion of the lot that's not being built, there is a underground infiltration system underneath that parking. So if it was to be built, we've made accommodations for that. In the Phase 1 development, we've created an infiltration basin in that area exclusive to roof runoff. So we have clean roof runoff going to an infiltration basin in that same area. So should the full build-out be required and we go to build it, essentially, we build a parking lot, the infiltrate, excuse me, the infiltration basin turns into an underground storage chamber system in generally the same location, and then the parking lot is built over the top of it. Now, the four other infiltration practices, there's two on the left-hand side of the page and two on the right-hand side of the page. The two larger ones mitigate part of the pavement that's around the building and then roof runoff. And then there's two smaller infiltration practices that handle the driveway runoff. So for, for other utilities, within UPS Road, we have electric, we have gas, and we have water. So we're going to be tapping off the existing services. And we have, we are proposing that this project be connected to municipal sewer. So we had a conversation with DPW, wanted to see if there was ample sewer capacity and if there was a way for us to connect. They confirmed that there was. Our flows are based on the Title V criteria for warehousing at 50, 15 gallons per day per person. So the total flow for this project's a little bit less than 1,500 gallons. The location of our tie-in point is actually out in Brick Hill Road. So directly across from this development, there's another manufacturing commercial flex space building. They have a pump station where they take their effluent and then pump it up into a force main within Brick Hill Road. This project is going to have an independent pumping system onsite that will go out into Brick Hill Road and then tie into that force main that's out there. Now, as a part of the discussion with this, DPW is going to be engaging Weston and Sampson to independently peer review, confirm pump sizing, pipe sizing, length of run to make sure that we're connecting in an appropriate manner. So all of that is in, in process right now. We did issue a landscape and lighting plan. The lighting that's being proposed to the site is dark skies compliant, full cutoff, and it primarily revolves around the parking area. So there'll be independent poles with some wall packs on the building. And then landscaping, we did kind of two different things. So landscaping really revolved around the streetscape aspect of it as well as the replacing vegetation that was being disturbed or altered as a part of the construction. So the whole side and back portion of the site, we engaged our landscape architect to specifically select native species, replacement seeds and plantings to kind of recreate some of the, the natural buffering that was back there. And then again, more, more ornamental plantings up on UPS Road itself. And with that, I will turn it over to, I believe, Kim for traffic discussion.
Good evening. I'm Kim Hazavardian, a traffic engineer with TAP LLC. I wonder if you could put it back where the site plan is. I'm going to talk a little bit about the driveways. Again, the floor area is about 48,910 square feet. And there are going to be two driveways. They're both along the west side of UPS Road, which on the drawing would be the top side of UPS Road. And they'll both be unsignalized. One driver will be about 250 feet away from Brick Hill Road, and the other driver will be about 600 feet from Brick Hill Road. Now, one of the first things we did is look at site distances. We conducted field measurements. And the driveway closer to Brick Hill Road, looking toward Brick Hill Road, you can see all the way to Brick Hill Road. Looking the other way toward UPS, you can see 300 feet. And that provides for speeds of 37 miles an hour, according to the ASHTO calculation, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. And that's appropriate for the road because, as you can see, UPS Drive is a fairly short road with curves, and people just really can't build up that much speed. The other driveway that went farther away from UPS Road, if you're looking toward the UPS site, you can see all the way to that area. And if you're looking toward Brick Hill Road, you can see 400 feet. And that provides for speeds of 44 miles an hour, which is well in excess of what you expect to see on, on UPS Road. We looked at crash history at the Brick Hill Road, UPS Road intersection. We looked at the five most recent years of available and finalized data, 2016 through 2020, and we saw no crash. Our next step, and now we can go to the trip generation slide, is we calculated trip generation for the site using the standard rates and equations published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And over the course of an entire weekday, the site generates 116 total vehicle trips, total of in and out, roughly half in, roughly half out. And of those 116 vehicles, 29 are trucks. For the morning peak hour, we see 29 total vehicle trips, 23 in and 6 out. And as far as trucks go. out, and as far as trucks go, trucks comprise one trip, one out, and none in. For the PM peak hour, we calculate thirty-two vehicle trips, total of in and out, nine in, twenty-three out, and of those, we have one truck, one in, and none out. Now, the other trucks happen dispersed over the, over the course of the day, adding up to a total of twenty-nine for the entire day. As far as where the trips are gonna be going to and coming from, we anticipate that the traffic will be oriented toward, toward Brick Hill Road, and then out to Route 129, and much of it out to Route 3. As far as the order of magnitude of the traffic and what level of analysis is advisable, there's a guideline of a hundred vehicle trips. If you exceed that guideline, you're normally looking at doing a, a detailed analysis. This project generates during the peak hour, twenty-nine in the morning and thirty-two in the afternoon, so we're below that guideline, and a project is presumed to have no significant impact on area traffic operations with volumes of that level. Now, what that means is locations that don't see much congestion or delay now will stay that way and not have, not have a material impact, and locations that are already congested and have delays, there won't be a significant effect on those delays. That concludes my, my comments, and I'd be happy to answer questions now or whenever you'd like.
One question I have is, so did you, did you actually measure the, do a speed check?
No, we didn't do a speed check because, because of the length of the road and, and the curvature of the road. We don't think it's going to be a...
Most, most traffic studies I've seen, they usually have a speed check too, so that you can...
Right.
...compare that against the, the distance, I mean, the speeds from the site distance.
Right. If we were doing a, a larger traffic impact study, then, then we, we, we would probably have a, a speed check in there.
What size trucks are they? Are they full tractor-trailers?
Well, it's, I think that's more of a, an operational question, but, but I would anticipate, I, I don't wanna really, it, it could be up to that. I'm not sure if they're gonna have smaller trucks besides that. The numbers we put on, on the trip generation table, though, they're generally considered larger trucks, like at least a box truck, box truck up to tractor-trailer.
I noticed that in your, in the patter, the path that you have, it's going out to Route 3 via Brick Hill and 129, yet you didn't include that intersection in the traffic study.
Well, a couple of things on that. One thing is when you're leaving the site, there's a sign that says trucks, no left turn at the end of UPS Road. The other thing is the volumes that we're talking about are around thirty-ish vehicle trips during the peak hours, and you generally, with that level of trip generation, you say what the numbers are, you might say where you think they're going to, but then you don't usually get into a more detailed analysis in that. The detailed analysis would come into play if you have more than a hundred trips during the peak hour.
So normally, I would agree with that, except for that intersection is already bad, and UPS has to pay for a police detail.
Yep.
So I'm a little concerned that adding even this small number of trips at various times of the day might cause a problem.
I don't know if it'll allay your concerns, but I'm gonna give you the numbers anyway. As far as traffic leaving the site, we're talking twenty-three vehicles leaving the site in the morning and twenty, and twenty, excuse me, we're talking six trips leaving the site in the morning, and twenty-three leaving the site in the afternoon, so that's less than one vehicle per two minutes going away from the site. So, so that's the kind of impact we're talking about. It's not, it's going to be kind of a, I'd call it a car every couple of minutes as opposed to a stream of cars.
Yes.
And the number of trucks is pretty low.
That stills concerning to me for that intersection.
You have no idea how bad that intersection gets, say, around Thanksgiving through Christmas?
Just to remind the proceedings, I think that intersection's entirely in Billerica.
That's right.
Yes, I know.
So, so, I mean, it's, it's relevant because you may not, the town of Chelmsford may not have jurisdiction.
I understand that, and my other concern is that we should probably ask for Bill Ricker's input on this.
Right. I had advised that, I think initially, that they get some sort of communication.
Because one of the, one of the issues we always have with neighboring towns is that they don't ask us for input with things that might impact us. I would like to...
Absolutely.
...have us extend that courtesy to them, because I would like to see that traffic study include that intersection, and then see if there's some mitigation that might be able to happen.
One, one other question I had was that, somewhere in the application, I read something about ninety-eight, having ninety-eight employees at some point, and for that reason, the idea of a hundred-and-sixteen daily trips total seemed not realistic. If, if you have ninety-eight employees that are coming and going, you're at least gonna have double ninety-eight, so that, I think I'd like to see how that gets reconciled. I, I understand what, I understand where your number's coming from. They're coming from the size of the building and the rates from the standard stuff, but I'm applying the common sense factor, which says that if you're gonna have ninety-eight people, you're gonna have more than a hundred-and-sixteen trips. So I guess I would like to, to have us think about that, I guess.
And related to that, it, it sounds like, based on the demand expected, that there's already a tenant?
No, there, there's no tenants. It's a, it's a spec warehouse building. There's no tenant.
Okay.
And what was this, the phases, was the parking lot were not, you're not building up the parking lot?
I, I think, I, I believe...
Why?
It's in the accout, it's in the protection area. The section behind the building isn't gonna be built.
Yeah, so, so Phase Two is the parking, there are about forty, forty-five spaces in the rear that won't be built out. They're gonna be land banked, because based upon what they think the intended operations are, that they won't need those employee parking spaces, that they'll be fine with the forty-five, the fifty-one spaces on the east and west side of the building, the seven loading bay, the seven loading docks. So they'll land bank the parking spaces in the back and keep that as open space, and in the event in the future, if it is necessary, based on the operations, the specific tenant operations, then those will be built. But that's Phase Two.
So you expect ninety-eight employees, you expect that those parking spaces won't be used because of the operations, but you don't have a tenant yet?
No, I mean, it's a, it's a spec building, and the ninety-eight employees, they'll probably be in shifts, so it's not all ninety-eight employees coming in at one time in the morning. There may be various shifts, as these warehouse operations typically are, it's, you have a morning shift, an afternoon shift, so it's not gonna be like a nine-to-five operations, I don't, I don't think.
So without the Phase Two driveway around the back, how is the truck traffic going to flow?
So we've done two things. We did swept house analysis for the fire department, and then we also looked at tractor-trailers. These are the loading docks. So they'll come in, they'll unload, and then they'll go back out. Same maneuver for the fire truck. Over here, if we need fire department access, they come in, we actually provide a fire department turnaround, and we've striped out a specific area of pavement that people cannot park in. We've submitted that swept house analysis, we've been overpiped with the fire department, and they were okay with that configuration. Obviously, the full build-out, we have the connecting road in the back, so you can loop all the way around the building.
So if a tractor-trailer truck makes a wrong turn into the wrong parking lot, how do they get out?
They would have to back up and out, or they would have to use the fire department turnaround.
Okay.
What's the reason for phasing it? And if you are gonna phase it, when do you, when do you think Phase Two will commence?
Yeah, so, I mean, do we have a, do we have an answer, Michael?
I mean, maybe I should just go through the architectural section of it, so...
Good evening, my name's Michael Curran. I'm an architect that was commissioned by the owner. So the, the number that you saw, that ninety-eight, is purely driven from the building code occupancy based upon the use. So when you take the mixed use of the office section and the warehouse section of the building, the occupant load is ninety-eight. In reality, with the amount of racking and spacing that's going on in this facility, the owner expects far less employees than the ninety-eight required by the occupant load of the building code. So the, the concept of deriving what Ben called a Phase Two of the parking section was to minimize the amount of impervious surface and use a number of parking spaces that would be considered more than sufficient for the actual use. However, because of zoning requirements, we wanna be able to show that we can have those parking spaces in the future, should the need be there. We don't anticipate that, but that was the logic behind that decision.
Do you have a view of this from Brick Hill Road? Like, this is really high, right? Cause it's on a hill.
Right, so, so that is, so essentially, what you're looking at in plan there is forty-eight thousand nine hundred ten square feet of, you know, warehouse and nineteen-hundred square feet of office within that forty-eight thousand square feet. There's seven, seven loading dock bays that are put in, recessed into the building, part of for why Brian, what Brian discussed of the truck maneuverability out of there, but it also had a secondary benefit of screening those overhead doors around the side. So we have a building clear height inside of thirty feet and thirty-six feet to the parapet after the structural systems, and if you just scroll down, Evan, one more page. So this is two sides of the building taking from each driveway entrance. If you were to pull it back from the top rendering, that would be where Brick Hill Road would be. So we're back quite a bit from, from that side area. You can see on that top elevation, the recessed portion of the building there is where those loading docks are, and on the lower rendering, that front corner is the office component.
I like to, I like to get an understanding of what I'm looking at for Brick Hill Road, just because this whole area, when UPS first came in, one of the things they've done, and even when they expanded into the parking lot, is made sure that you couldn't really see it, you can't see it from Brick Hill Road. That was the agreement made with East Chelmsford when this first came in, when UPS first came in. And so I just wanna make sure that from Brick Hill Road, we're not looking at a big, ugly warehouse.
Yeah, sure, I, I have that topography, and I, I can generate a rendering for our next discussion, so you can see it from there.
Whether or not you need to put in more of, like, the trees, cause even now UPS is really building up all the tree coverage, so you can't see it, right? Cause I would have an issue if I could see this, if I drove on Brick Hill Road right now.
Yeah, I can, I can generate the rendering from that viewpoint.
I have a question for you, Chris.
Yeah.
How does this warehouse fall under the category of the definitions of warehouse?
Under fifty thou. It meets the definition of a warehouse.
As opposed to a distribution center, I think that's what you're trying to ask.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure this falls within that.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And this, and this is just solely for warehouse use, it's not, we're not asking for distributions, like, it would be classified as a medium distribution center under the current bylaws, and that's not what we're requesting, it's purely warehouse.
Okay. That's one of the reasons why I asked what the use and the tenant...
Yeah.
...would be.
Should we take it around, see if anyone has any questions? I wanna start with you, Paul.
I don't have a question right now. I don't have a question at this time. I do think other members have discussed the traffic. I, I happen to go by this location just about every day on the way to work, so I know it well. I, I do think we need to involve Bill Ricker because there is a detail officer at the intersection of Bill Ricker Road and, and Brick Hill during rush hour. Also, in the past, I've seen, especially during peak holiday shopping season, I've seen semi-trailers lined from top to bottom on UPS Drive, so I have some concerns about that as well, how that would, knowing that these owners don't own those trailers, but how this is all gonna fit in in that area.
Yeah, I've got concerns about, and maybe I'll defer to Joel, but a little bit of the concerns about the whole wetlands, and how close this is to the wetlands. I'm not the expert about wetlands, but I know about what we went through with...
Drinking water.
Well, no, with even UPS when they first came in, and how much money we spent to try to fix the friggin' Brick Hill Road so we could pass on it. So I'm a little concerned about, cause isn't there a lot in wetlands around this? Like, half the lot is wetlands here?
Yes, within the buffer zone.
Yeah.
Within the buffer zone, part of the buildings within the buffer zone.
And we have filed an NOI, so it will be before Concom.
They're on the next Concom agenda, I believe.
Yeah, I think that was that one.
I have no additional comments at this time.
I have no, no additional comments.
Nor do I at this point. I think it's mostly been covered.
I have a few things. I am somewhat uncomfortable with this, the two-phased approach. I understand the second phase for parking, but that driveway area, to me, should be done in the first phase, because I think that that is gonna potentially impact some of the traffic issues. Chelmsford Water District did have some concerns that they noted. It might be a good idea to have those concerns also sent to the peer reviewer to address as well.
Chris, Chelmsford or East Chelmsford? I think both would be impacted potentially, right? This is definitely East Chelmsford.
Thought it was the Chelmsford Water District.
There are center wells that are a little bit south, and then there are the east that are north, east, east received the, requested comment. I don't believe they've provided any comment yet.
Okay, so I wanna make sure, my only concern, when you mentioned Chelmsford, was that both got, are looking at this. Okay, that's it. I think they both need to get involved, so you agree with me then?
They've both, they've both been requested to comment.
Perfect.
So there's a Chelmsford Water District and then an East Chelmsford, just so that I can understand.
Yes.
Okay.
There's also a north.
North isn't a flat, it's where it's east.
We have no control over any of them.
So Evan, I would like to have those concerns added to the peer review for the waters.
Yep.
And just so I'm clear, we received comment from the Chelmsford Water District, but not E, okay.
Yep. And then the Cape Cod berm, I noticed, is throughout the perimeter of the property.
Yeah, it's not gonna hold up to trucks.
No, I would rather see granite all the way around that outside, because it's the perimeter holding all the stormwater in.
Yep.
And so if, if that fails, you won't be holding any stormwater in, and it's going right into the wetlands.
Yep, good point.
The snow storage, I also noticed, was within the hundred-and-fifty-foot areas, the buffers. I don't know if that might be a concern. Joel, I'm assuming you have other issues?
I do. I do. It would, it would be good to see the wells in relation to your property, because you are, you are near wells, and I know that there are wells that they only use part of the season, but they do use the... I saw that, I briefly glanced through the Chelmsford Water District, oh, by the way, they also called center, so if you ever hear anybody reference center, it's the Chelmsford Water District. And, and they were...
the Chelmsford Water District. And they were expressing issues about drainage in the area. I think that's one of the issues they have with those wells. And for that reason, then I think it's worth paying particular attention to the stormwater for that reason. And so I looked at the, I just did a quick glance at the estimated seasonal high groundwater for the ones that did have them, all the different level test pits. And what looked like would be the elevation of those, of the estimated seasonal high groundwater really seemed to vary quite a bit. That makes me think that those aren't necessarily reliable measurements. I did notice that the person who took them is not a licensed soil evaluator. I think it might be worthwhile to have more test pits done, particularly in the infiltration areas by a soil scientist who is more expert in recognizing seasonal high groundwater because I think I would really like to be sure that we understand where the groundwater level is, seasonal high groundwater.
Just a quick point of clarification. So Russ Tedford is a certified soil evaluator. Just his numbers, not on this. And I was out there as well with him.
Okay, okay. But it's still, when I look at those numbers, they don't make a lot of sense to me in terms of how they're varying. I mean, I don't compare them against the topography, the land topography, because obviously those can vary. But when you're looking at where the wetlands are and where the various levels of the seasonal high groundwater are, there seems to be a certain amount of variation that I would, that I would just attribute to error or whatever. I don't mean, I don't mean error in the sense that you're wrong, more error just in there's fluctuation where they're being identified. And I think that that's something that could be very important in terms of our, that this site not contributing to the drain, to the drainage issues that are there. So that would, that would be something that I would also recommend. And the other question I had was the peer review, are we, did DPW ask for us to get peer review on the stormwater? Is that correct?
It was, it was a consensus that the stormwater would be peer reviewed.
Okay.
So the commission's taking the lead, I believe it's CEI.
Okay, good.
They're going to do the stormwater peer review for both Planning Board and Conservation. And then I think I heard that the commission may do a second peer review related to some other, other aspects.
Okay. I mean, I would be happy to piggyback off their peer review because it's CEI.
Yeah, so CEI will be engaged, obviously, with the Planning Board process.
But I would, I would like to consider that we ask also that, that the number of, the number of test pits that are per the stormwater handbook be done in each of those infiltration areas, using a soil scientist to confirm the seasonal high groundwater. That's my request.
And I did have one more concern. The refuse and trailer parking area is within the 100-foot buffer and partially in the 50-foot buffer. And there's a chain link fence in that area. I would like to see, because if it's trailer parking, they would likely overhang the pervious, the pervious areas. So it might be good to put a wall there so that they can't back and park any further than the limits of the pavement.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Because if we do have some, some material within the trailers that leaks out, it would go right into the.
Yep, understood. Well, we're happy to look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, shall we?
Continue?
Open and possibly continue the public hearing?
Yeah, actually, could you include on the plans a foreground view that shows where the wells are?
Yeah, we have that.
You have that, okay. I didn't know if I actually asked for that or not.
You did.
Thank you.
I make a motion to open this to public. Do you hear? Can you hear it?
On favor?
Aye.
Sorry, me again, the pest.
My concern, I know that the truck traffic cannot turn left, that has to go right. But my concern is for the car traffic that'll turn left and go down Brick Hill and Rowan. So that's added traffic going down Brick Hill and Rowan through Chelmsford, going towards, you know, Boston Road. And also, Barwick is going to be concerned of Alpine Road, which is a cut through already. They've got two speed bumps on that road already because cars were going too fast down it. Just letting you know, that's probably what Barwick is going to be concerned about. They're going to be concerned about Alpine Road. But I'm concerned about the traffic, the car traffic going down Brick Hill, the additional car traffic it's going to cause. That's just it. Thank you.
Okay, I will take a motion to.
Continue?
Continue.
Second to the 27th.
Do we have enough room on the 27th?
We have all your continuances from tonight.
Do they all have to be that night?
Can I make it to the two weeks after that?
You can if you're trying to manage your agenda.
Yeah, I would like, this was, yeah, this wasn't really.
This went too much. So what's two weeks after?
Internalize your question.
October 11th.
I make a motion to continue this to October 11th.
That will probably work out. We'll probably have peer review back by then.
Okay.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you for your time and consideration. We'll see you back on October 11th.
We have a discussion to continue about 270.
You want to do this tonight?
I was going to say, can we?
I really would not like.
Generally, I don't think it's time sensitive at this point.
No.
But that's just my, my perspective on it.
I think that's probably true.
Yeah, I would not like to do it tonight.
What's the next, on the next agenda? How many meetings?
We have the three continuations from tonight and then 150 Dalton, opening a public hearing.
Next one's going to be pretty busy, too.
Hildrith, three meeting house, and 150 Dalton. So it's fairly manageable. And then whatever we do, whatever we need to do for MBTA zoning.
So can you manage the order of those?
However you want them.
I mean, I would, I would suggest to the chair that if the, if the Hildrith Street is the largest one, we take that.
Yeah.
Yeah, get the crowd out.
Will we have, I hope we'll have opinion of council by then.
Yeah, in fact, I may try to get council to attend. I think that'd be best.
I really do think there's some substantial issues here about exactly what the scope of our authority is.
Have to wait to find out.
Yeah, it's been, I know that it's changed with case law, so you can't just read the statute. You know, you gotta.
Okay. So we want to take 270 on October 11th? Can it wait?
Do we want to start?
I mean, as I understand the Planning Board, all you're doing is continuing your discussion that may lead to some sort of determination or vote. I thought we left it that we were hoping to at least get the peer reviews back for the CONCOM process.
Katie, are you here for that 270?
We can put it off of the 27th.
Is she waiting for 270?
I was here to listen, but don't, it's fine.
I mean, it's basically a standard, a standing agenda item at this point.
So let's keep, let's put it on, let's continue it to next week. So we have it on the agenda, and then if we need to, we continue to the 11th?
Exactly.
Unless, Joel, you have anything in particular that you want to quickly bring up?
I think, well, I mean, just from a larger perspective, if it were me, I would, I would want to make the decision at least as to whether I was going to open a hearing to rescind and then just continue the hearing, if we do open it, and then continue it. If it were up to me, I would want to do that before CONCOM closed. But.
That's a good point.
I wasn't, I wasn't expecting CONCOM to close on the 26th.
Well, no, no, but I mean.
So I think, isn't it in CONCOM right now? I'm sorry, I'm not up to date on this one. But isn't it in CONCOM, and if they came back and say that they're in violation of it, then can't we open it up and rescind our decision?
Yeah, aren't we waiting on them, kind of, sort of?
We, we're independent of what's happening with CONCOM. This is a decision that we make as to whether we, we want to revisit our decisions that we made. It's really independent of CONCOM. I mean, I mean, I think to some degree, the applicant was wanting us to sort of see if, as they go through CONCOM, whether our concerns would be addressed, right? But it's a matter of, well, as a, as a board, you know, do you want to, I mean, I would think that the board would want to make a decision as to whether you thought that this was material. That was, that was the question I was addressing because that was the question posed. And then, and then for town council to say, okay, yes, you know, I agree, this is material. And if that's the case, then we at least could open a hearing on rescinding. I'm not saying that opening a hearing means that we rescind. I just mean that we open a hearing to consider it, and then we can continue that all day long.
So you envision council being involved? Is that what I just heard you say?
Well, Paul, Paul said at our meeting in which we discussed this, that he said that you would have to show, or that there was a question of showing that there's a material concern here, right? That the lack of material was, the lack of information provided was material to the decisions.
So then if we're trying to get council here for the 27th, let's suggest put on 270, file councils here.
I think that'd be, that'd be great. I thought Paul was like going to reply, but maybe we want to actually have him here, so we.
Yeah, I mean, I can say, I, I reviewed your, I reviewed your memo, and I want to engage as well on that. Maybe that would be good if council's here. That way, Paul can have a.
So could we put him on first?
To discuss both issues?
Put 270 on first with council?
Yep, yep. So let me, let me confirm tomorrow that he can, that he's available. If he's not, then we'll have to.
Can I suggest, have we set a start time yet for the September 27th?
No, you have not.
Do we want to maybe start a little early?
Six thirty?
Six or six thirty?
Six, probably.
AM?
Yeah.
Get home before midnight.
Six is good.
Six? I'm good with six if everybody else is. Anybody have a problem?
I am, coming from me.
We have pizza still, but.
Yeah, I think six thirty, I can do more easily. I can probably do six, but.
Well, if we want, six thirty, it's your call.
Yeah, I can do six thirty.
All right, six thirty.
All right. And write in, no workshop, right?
Yeah, write in, no workshop. Yeah. But I think we should open, I agree with Joel, I think we should open 270 as a, open the hearing, and then we can always just continue it. But I think it's important that we open the hearings, then we can.
So you're going to discuss that on the 27th?
Right.
To open the hearing or to open it tonight? I'm okay.
Whether to open, discuss whether to open the hearing on the 27th because that way we can discuss whether it's, whether there was a material, you know, lack of information. That wasn't, that wasn't established.
But procedurally, on the 27th, you'd be taking a vote to open a hearing. A hearing wouldn't open on the 27th.
Knowing all.
I think we have to advertise a hearing.
Right, right. That we would make a decision on the 27th whether we would open a hearing.
Okay, got it. I'm following, yeah, it's getting late.
I think that would be, I think it'd just be a good measured way to do it.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Just before you leave, one of the agenda items is FinCom presentation on the adult zoning, that's the Planning Board article, the adult daycare. It's my understanding that FinCom, you're not available the 19th. They are meeting on the 21st.
Okay, I don't understand.
Maybe not so much. Others.
But others do, and we do.
I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should start commenting on.
If the board chooses not to present to FinCom, then.
I don't want to present to FinComs. I don't think they have any business about it.
Then FinCom will likely.
I said that to Jim once before.
The outcome's pretty predictable.
Yeah, they're fine.
So I would encourage you to attend.
If you want, I will, I will present it to FinCom. I can present it to FinCom.
You're going to be there.
This one's pretty, pretty straightforward.
We have the MBTA that night. So what, so who, you want someone to go there?
Oh, shit. Oh, that's a Riverdale Road one, right?
Yeah. What I, I believe they started six, I think Jim Clancy said they were starting at, did they start their meetings at six? I think on the 21st, they were starting at six.
Did he confirm the 21st?
A week and a half ago, he did.
And they start at six? What time's the?
Seven.
At the senior center?
Seven.
Can I run on the TV, wants to go home?
Yeah, but if I'm not going to be at FinCom, I'm going to be at the Planning Board meeting.
Yeah, but you go to FinCom for an hour and then come up. It doesn't start for an hour later.
Well, zoom in.
You can zoom in.
Somebody.
And being two meetings at the same time.
You need to pick between your committees, lady.
FinCom starts at six, the other one starts at seven. Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, a second. We'll figure it out later. I'll wipe you.